The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer of 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, thank you for bringing us all safely together. Thank you that we did not suffer great floods that everybody expected. Help all those who are in need this spring as they melt since they needed water into places where it's not needed. Help those who need shelter in this spring as the weather warms. Help those traveling, help them to come back to their own, to their homes safely. And Lord, help us. Send your Holy Spirit to assist us in our deliberations that he might remember the most needy amongst us and bring to them the needs, the need, the help that they need. Amen.
Mayor Robertson?
Present.
Councilman Trask?
Here.
Councilwoman Harson absent tonight. Councilwoman Elliott, here. Councilwoman Alber?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams Harper?
Present.
City Attorney Lee, here. City Attorney Agent Erica Trask, here. City Attorney Dunham, here. Public Works Supervisor Craig Craft, here. City Fire Chief Stork is absent tonight. City Engineer Alber?
Here.
City Building Official Peterson?
Here.
City Municipal Court Judge Coster?
Here.
City Police Chief Hemroyd is absent tonight, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will open for public comments. Please advise that this first public comment, the council is only entertaining comments as they pertain to agenda items that are being heard. If you have anything, apart from the agenda items, or if you've heard the last public comment, then please state your name for the record for more than three minutes.
Carrie Pinter, fourteen seventeen Mel Street. I would like to comment on Agenda I in our new business number thirteen. A review of Pine West LLC requests to amend the seat code to eliminate the hotel requirement on the order and have the attorney drop the ordinance for a first reading. I absolutely am in favor of letting Pine West come in here and do this development. They came to the Regional Planning Commission with boards, with plans, with something that we could all look at that was tangible, ask questions, go through it. It was not like the dog and pony show that I sat through the next RPC meeting where I'm getting a hundred luxury apartments out my front door on Bell Avenue, to be followed by a casino and a hotel next to the La Quinta. We can't have it both ways. You either want to develop and let everybody come into this community and develop, or we don't do any of them. But because I'm fortunate enough to have these luxury apartments coming because we desperately need housing in this community, we absolutely need places for people to go eat and drink and spend their money. I am a resident in this community. I live here. I work here. I visit here when it's convenient for me from Park City. I would ask this board to consider this. Pine West has done everything that they should have. They're asking for us to assist them. Ely seems to be all about development and what we can do to bring in people, whether it's tourists or those of us that actually live here. We need the opportunity to let this place grow, and I believe that Pine West doing their development is going to help us all out. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Wolf. I'm kind of diametrically opposed to what she just said because we have rules in place for a reason. And if Pine West wants to have a casino, then they should abide by the rules, just like everybody else. There's no reason to change the rules for them because what they want to bring isn't that great of an addition to the community. If they build the requisite number of rooms, now that's an addition to the community. That's a benefit to the community. It brings more commerce to the community besides a casino that is designed strictly for, you know, I guess the term is the grind gambler. And I see no reason at all to change the code to allow them to do that. Build the rooms, and I'm sure they'll come, and everybody will be happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Sevishman. I came to oppose item thirteen. I was on the council when we instituted that, and the reason we did was to protect our partners that already live in the city and have businesses here. We can't let a place come in and build four walls and put a hundred slot machines in it with one attendant. We need the infrastructure done by bigger companies that'll come in and make a change. You can look at some of the other communities that have these little casinos. Jackpot has one. It does nothing for the community. And this ordinance being changed will do nothing for our community.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. For the record, I'm Caroline McIntosh. I am in opposition to Pine West Development's proposal to eliminate the hotel text. I did not know if Mr. Tyler West was in the items this evening. I didn't see his name on the roster, or if he's ever been to Ely. I was really hoping to meet him, to invite him to be a part of our community. We still need Little League coaches. We still need burger flippers at the horse races. But I noticed this is a Delaware company. Probably not likely he's ever going to help us. White Pine County Tourism and Recreation and White Pine Main Street are working very hard to create a destination experience in Ely and White Pine County. Both groups are pro-business. However, eliminating the hotel text from the ordinance creates an unfair advantage for Pine West. Its existing operators abide by the ordinance. Diversifying our economy will require more lodging rooms. Currently, fifteen percent of our labor force is hospitality-related, and with additional lodging rooms, the hospitality labor force can grow. It will not grow with a mom-and-pop little casino with one attendant. Pine West is simply a transactional development company. If the city of Ely does not concede to eliminating the hotel text, Pine West is still free to build a gas station, convenience store, and have up to fifteen slots. The Ely City Council will decide if the future of Ely is a gas, gamble, and go community or a destination with lodging rooms. I urge you to keep the ordinance in place for the future of Ely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Sandy Moreno, and mainly regards to Article thirteen, the one everyone's been speaking about. One thing everyone has forgot to mention that it is not just a casino. They're not mentioning the Starbucks, the gas station, the drive-thru, the convenience store. They're not mentioning the restaurant. I haven't heard one person mention the restaurant. They're trying to scare everyone into thinking it's just going to be a little hole-in-the-wall casino. And that's not what we're being told, and that's not what his plans show. And I've been told who he wants to bring in, but I'm not a big idea say. So, I'm very much for this project, and I really doubt anyone speaking up here lives where we live and experienced what is there now. And no one else has offered to come in and to improve this area. The people that are there have said they're not going to improve it. So, this company is willing to come in and do that. And in other meetings, I've heard mentions, "We don't need another coffee store. We don't need another franchise." This town is made up of franchises, whether it be a Denny's, a Hilton, or a Holiday Inn, or a art store, restaurants, this whole town, Ace Hardware, they're all made, they're all a franchise of some sort. So, allowing another franchise to come in is just going with what is already here. And my husband and I are both retired. We have a lot of friends. Most of our friends still work, and they're very much in support of this agreement or this process here to make things move forward, but they can't be here because like the people that are opposed to it keep saying, they employ a lot of people. And the people that are working are afraid to offend their current employers or maybe a potential employer. So, it's very intimidating for someone who's in favor to come up here knowing that maybe their boss is sitting in the back. And I do think Ely needs to grow, and if you deny this development, you're just telling everyone else, "Don't bother." And I understand why the city wants the motel tax. I've seen some of the papers of where you spend the motel tax, and one of the things I don't like about it is the golf course. Not really in the golf, and most of the working class aren't. But that's something that the city has had for a long time, and a lot of people enjoy, and it might be a tourism thing. So, not everyone's going to be happy. You're not going to please everyone, but if you don't start moving forward and you continue to appease the businesses that are here already, what's going to make another business want to come in? How is this town going to grow? And thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Thank you for, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ann Keller. I'm a partner with the Hotel Nevada. I don't have a threat to make for an alarm to sound. I do know that a hundred machine is not a hole-in-the-wall casino, though. Anyway, that's, you either here or there. I love the idea of a good development on the corner of Great Basin Highway, Allman Street. I love it. I would promise that I'll be among the first people to stand in line to go to a twelve-hundred-square-foot hotel casino on that property, or I'd be, I'd just as happy to go to a fifteen-or-less, you know, tavern on that property. I'm here to ask you to take some time to do a little bit more research and perhaps visit a hundred-plus-machine slot parlor that's proposed before you make any decisions with regard to the language in Ordinance seven oh two adopted in two thousand seventeen by Bill number two zero one and seven zero one, which requires that businesses that includes a casino or tavern with more than sixteen slot machines also have fifty hotel rooms to support the gaming efforts. That's what the law reads right now. My father, Paul Keller, who died in May of two thousand twenty, was part of the effort to put this ordinance in place in two thousand seventeen. He was a staunch, staunch believer in the free-market economy. He always said less is more when it comes to government regulation. He loved competition. Loved, oh my God, he loved competition. He was also a hotel casino owner who was a witness to the proliferation of slot parlors that grew unchecked roughly from nineteen ninety-five, when the first Dottie's opened in Las Vegas, to about two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, when some of the counties, the larger counties in Nevada, started to put the ordinance in place like what we have now. The idea that this one happened in two thousand seventeen was not that far off from where everybody else was. It takes a few years for things to trickle through. You know, I mean, I know if you guys know the process. Slot parlors with casinos with more than sixteen machines without hotel rooms go by all sorts of quirky names: Jackpot Jonies, Dottie's Molly's, Red Lantern. And they rely almost entirely on a tiny staff with roughly ninety to ninety-five percent of the cash flow coming directly from gambling. That's giant. Typically, they're dreary places with little to no cha-cha-cha. By design, slot parlors serve as little as possible with no regards to food and drink. Their kitchens are often microwave ovens and vending machines. The bars are barely there. People don't, people don't go to a slot parlor to hang out with other people. Family doesn't come to town to stay at the Red Lantern. You never hear someone say, "Meet me at Dottie's for a drink," or "Let's go to Bad Jackpot Jonies to watch a game." Slot parlors are for hardcore slot machine players who are particularly adept at creating models.
Ms. Keller?
I'm just asking you from the bottom of my heart, please, 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 go visit a slot parlor for yourself that has more than six to seven machines. Thank you for your service to our community, and thank you for your time.
Any other public comments?
I'd like to thank you for giving just a minute or two here, just being there. I'm really not very good at this, but I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys and your service.
Mr. Reed, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Brian Reed. My family has been in business here in Ely since nineteen sixty-seven. When my father opened a dealer, bought out Altman to build leadership here. We opened our first convenience store in nineteen seventy-eight, so we're celebrating forty-five years in that business this year. We believe Ely and White Pine County is a great place to live and to do business. We were developing late, in the late nineteen seventies and early eighties when people were leaving here because Kenfath was closing down and the town was drying up, and we took that opportunity to develop. We have continued to build and improve since then. We presently operate three, three art place convenience stores, Subway Restaurant, Yen and Fitness, and employ around seventy-five people in Ely. We continue to look for opportunities to grow and build our businesses. Over the years, our family has served on the City Council, Water Sewer Board, Urban Rec Board, Museum Board, has all been involved in the Chamber of Commerce, and the Ely Volunteer Fire Department. We presently have a family member serving on the School Board, White Pine Association Board, and as a member of the Ely Volunteer Fire Department. He's been there for close to forty years, I think. We are members of the Chamber of Commerce and affiliate to many organizations and events within the community. We are here. We love it here. I appreciate many of the things that are being done by the City Council and other groups to improve our community and to bring new excitement and businesses to the community. I am all for growth and change. In relation to the specific ordinance, which is item thirteen on the, on the agenda, I, I think it has sort of good purpose, requiring motels to be built in order to, you know, requiring casinos to have motel rooms attached to it. We have, we have experienced an increase in motel rooms, and I think it's great, but I don't think that we need to give up on that. I think we need more lodging, and I don't want to discourage those who have plans already to build along with casinos to stop because we changed the ordinance. As we, I just think it's troubling that these changes that are being made, like closing Avenue and changing the ordinances relative to casino and motel rooms, are happening, not to bring midlife sleep businesses into the community, but to bring businesses in that compete those spaces that are already being quite well.
Mr. Reed, thank you.
Okay. I'm happy with the desire to get that ISO closed up, but I'm concerned that some of the things we are doing will create new ISOs by closing down businesses that are already filling those spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other public comments?
You guys have a follow-up? Jason Boywood, representative of the Prospector here in Ely, Nevada, speaking to oppose the elimination of fifty-room ordinance that's in place. As with all the other operators here in town, we're all for development, we're all for growth, but it needs to be the proper development growth that won't be detrimental to the rest of the businesses here in town. As a lot of you are aware, we're in the process of building a hundred group camp to be in. Ordinance for about a million dollars already, and you spend a lot of money with local companies based in engineering, Red Brothers. Pine West Development has spent zero dollars with any local company here in town. They're engineers for Avenue York. They're Delaware company. It shows that they're not investing here in the community. If they get this approved, Pine West will be gone, the operator of Vegas will be here, and the profits will go directly south. Our new development will create over five hundred thousand a year in room tax revenue that will look directly to the city in addition to a hundred new job, jobs that our development will create. Plus, we're building a hundred apartments with the possibility of building up to four hundred apartments. Unfortunately, on Monday, when this agenda came out, I had to call Basement Engineer and cancel my plans. If Pine West is allowed to open a casino without the room requirement, we're not building. It doesn't pencil. The projects go together, the apartments and our hotel casino, it's all in one project for us. We can't move forward with the project. So, that's a loss of five hundred thousand a year in room tax revenue. That's not creating jobs. Pine West Sea Store, Gas Station, Coffee Shop will create a handful of jobs. That's not job creation. Abiding by the ordinance that's in place is job creation. We're going to invest fifty million dollars into the community. I know better than anybody the cost that it takes to build a hotel and casino. All the costs are on the hotel side. I could put up four walls and a roof and shove a bunch of slot machines in there for relatively little money. They're not willing to put the investment into this community like we have. Just last year, we donated over a million dollars in land to the Indians Reservation here in town. We donate to every organization that asks money from us. We've been here for a long time. We're not going anywhere. We're not a company from out of town that's promising everything to get the zoning changed, and once they get the zoning and all the approvals changed, we'll never see them again. We're here to stay. We invest in this community. We care about our employees. We care about everybody here. And again, we oppose this, the elimination of the fifty, fifty-room requirement. Again, we're all for competition in this town. Build your fifty rooms and it will compete on a even playing field. Don't put up four walls and try to compete. It doesn't work that way. In addition, you'll probably put out quite a few local businesses out of town, which is loss of room tax, loss of jobs. These are facts. I'm not telling you whatever you want to hear, like the other group that's looking to develop. I would love to call Basement Engineer tomorrow and tell him to fire this project back up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
It's all good, Bones. Hi, I'm Steph Boywood. I'm with the Prospector for Talia, the human health here in Ely. I just want to echo what my husband is saying in terms of how allowing a slot parlor to come in through the changing of this ordinance will decimate our local economy, hands down. There was a reason the previous City Council put it into effect, and there was a reason it needs to stand today. The number, I think it's important that everyone has in the front of their mind, eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Eight hundred thousand dollars a year right now could be going straight to the city of Ely in tax revenue between our new hotel casino project and if another company, another casino in here in town folds because they can't compete, that's another two, three hundred thousand dollars lost to the Torren Rec Board. So, eight hundred thousand dollars a year is what we're saying. Ely could potentially lose if we don't build and another hotel casino goes under. We all know important, how important jobs are, especially right now in this economy. I am proud to say that we continue to play, pay as many employees as we could during the COVID shutdown, even when we had our doors closed. And I don't know if, if anyone in Pine West or anyone out of Las Vegas can say that. If anyone loses money because of revenues being down because of this slot parlor, that means layoffs straight off the board for all, all hotel properties, not just one, but everyone. So, are we okay with losing up to eight hundred thousand dollars a year for revenue for the city and massive layoffs across the board for a pretty shiny new corner? That's going to do very little for our local economy and do very little for our local families. People need to put food on the table. People need to feel supported in our community. And as my husband said, we donate to everything under the sun. If there's something to donate to, we do it. We just have Santa Claus at the hotel for free in December because we might still be out there with, with the kids in the community and show how much that we care. I know this is a very exciting endeavor to possibly have some changes on that corner. And look, I think we can all agree that we all want the same thing at the end of the day. We want to clean up the town. We want this place to look beautiful. We want it to be safe, and we want it to thrive, especially locally owned and operated businesses, right? Family locally owned and operated, and we have to support our own so we can support each other. And if this predator company comes in, which it is, everything's going to change. The city's going to be out millions and millions and millions of dollars. What does that do for the young kids coming up in town? What does that do for the future generations? And what message does that send? If you're from out of town, sure, the City Council will change, change rules for you, no problem. What's the next City Council going to do? And the next City Council going to do so. I know you're stuck between a rock and a hard place, but we appreciate you hearing us out. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Attorney. Nobody ever mentioned you. Catwell, six, city of Ely, third generation of Eite, former councilwoman. I am here to address item thirteen, new business. I was obviously the council when we put this ordinance in place. And I don't mean to sound harsh, but I really care about my community and my hometown. I don't see any positives in Pine West's plans to justify modifying this ordinance to accommodate them. It appears to me that their plan only supports Pine West and not the city of Ely. We do not need another gas station, coffee place, or casino, but we do need more hotel rooms with in-house casino and twenty-four-hour restaurant to accommodate our tourism trade, housing such as apartments, more jobs, and more room tax revenue. The Boywood Project will do just that. They are using local contractors. White Pine West is using out-of-state engineers. So, I'm asking the City Council members to leave this ordinance as it is to support our city of Ely and community. It would be a shame to lose the Boywood Project when it's everything the city of Ely has always wanted and needed for a very long time. If ordinance is changed, we will lose the Boywood Project and all her other businesses in town that locals own. So, please, vote with the needs of our city and community and vote no to amends the Ely City Code eliminating hotel requirement text from section three, five, thirteen. One more thing. Listen to our turn rep board. I have the advice that they give you. They work for our city and support the community, so their voice matters along with the citizens of Ely. Thank you for your time. And please, do the right thing and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's almost like new tourism is coming up next. Kyle Warbath, for the record, Director of Tourism. White Pine County Tourism is pro-growth and not speaking out against the merit of one business over another. I'm here to express my concern about Agenda I and thirteen and new business, the city eliminating a precautionary measure that is an adopted code. A measure that was adopted by many other communities across the state, a code that protects the city from a business model that has very little impact on city revenues, a code that requires rooms to be associated with larger gaming operations. This code was put into place for a reason, and it isn't outdated or antiquated. It was adopted just a few councils before you. This code protects businesses, supports tourism, and increases revenues received by the city and its partners in room tax. We don't just eliminate precautionary measures without thinking about the long-term consequences. White Pine County Tourism has a strategy that guides us in our advertising, messaging, the photos we use, the videos we use, and guides us through all tough decisions we have to make. When we find ourselves being reactionary, the result, the result does not come close to having the same impact as when we follow our strategy. So, I ask, does the city have an economic development master plan or strategy? Does this business align with that? And if so, then you should remove the barriers to accomplishing your goals. But if you don't have a plan and you're just reacting to the first opportunity to present itself, then you need to stop right here. The council needs to be thoughtful about this item and not make such an important decision without a North Star to guide them, which means you should not throw this code out. We all have personal rules and standards, and it's okay for communities to have rules and standards. This is how we function. This is how we preserve our values for generations to come. It's absurd to think that we should just throw out our own codes because it doesn't work for someone else who wants to join our community. Let's throw out zoning and building codes next because... Let's throw out zoning and building codes next because they're really annoying to developers and we desperately need houses. But we can't do that because it's the city's responsibility to the community to execute thoughtful and planned growth. And just a few councils ago, this code was adopted because the community agreed that this is a standard for thoughtful and planned growth. Again, if you don't have a plan or strategy, or your plan is any and all growth is good, then I urge you not to undo the work of the council before either. There are plenty of examples of communities opening up to unobstructed development just to wake up one day to a place they no longer recognize and no longer feels like home. And while that might not happen here on the first one, it certainly can happen with a few misguided decisions. What slippery slope is this going to open up for the community? So while that corner desperately needs help, this particular project is not going to remedy any of our real needs. If you want to be a true champion of long-term positive economic growth and focus on the redevelopment district, implement the facade improvement incentive program, do what you need to do to get us the much-needed houses in our community so we can start growing again, and above all else, be an advocate for small business and support the businesses that kept this community alive when everyone else gave up on it. That is why I urge you to not repeal the protectionary measure in city code requiring rooms be associated with larger gaming operations. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item nine dash two two six, you've considered removing the penalty for removing two individuals. I'm not against dedicating the write-off, but it's beyond equal consideration and protection under the law. I want to remind you that I paid for my park at four ninety High Street, principal of penalty rounds is instructed from a letter from city clerk Jennifer Lee David, November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. And yet today, the city has done to me for over two thousand three hundred dollars. And the city today has failed to reimburse me for the old permits I made for the old Ely grade school at six twenty-two High Street. You rolled off the back building for the Young Tom Bath property when he purchased the Plaza Hotel. I want to remind you, click the law prohibits discrimination in federally funded or assisted public utility. I remind the city council, the property of the property located at seven ninety Heaven and I was given a whole thousand to go to write off and they used all the utilities for years and have not gave city
Just to check, just these properties are not on the agenda of the meeting?
And we're talking about that item, okay?
Talking about these properties on the agenda of the meeting?
On your agenda item ten B three, you're to consider approval of resolution two thousand twenty-three dash three regarding the support of Nevada's, oops, another one that I haven't received, I got a comment. On your agenda item ten B thirteen, you're to consider possible removal of hotel or motel requirement for section three dash five fifteen of the city code. The requirement must stay in place. There is no real benefit to the city with it to remove. The city can receive a pit from gaming tax. Only if the property tax and room tax will be a factor for our community. We have other properties in the city that have made that positive benefit, and those seeking unlimited gaming privileges need to step up to the same standard. The city will lose its last RBD, like located in Pro, proposed project area, and what do you plan on putting those that may be economically challenged that live in those, that particular part? I remind you, state IRS prohibits the city from assisting an enterprise which would compete substantially with any enterprise which is already established in the city or county, in which the city is hoping, and you appear to be doing that. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item ten B fifteen, that item is a county concern, not a city concern. It needs to be denied, it is out of the city's jurisdiction. Mr. Mayor, on your ten item ten B eleven, the allowance of lead persons to take their assigned city vehicles home with the callouts was not considered in the past because the IRS considers it a matter of benefit, and the employee would face would be taxed accordingly. In the past, employees did not want to be taxed for that, that's the benefit, we need to keep that in mind.
Any other public comment either in here on the, I'm sorry, in here on the, on the computer?
I will not be able to attend the meeting tomorrow, so I respectfully requesting that my letter be read and a public comment. I am submitting this letter to request that city council members consider the ramifications of amending the city code, chapter five, paragraph F, item twelve, Pine West Development. Should Pine West Development be granted a full casino license without the mandatory fifteen-room requirement, their business would not be contributing to the customary room tax the existing hotels casinos provide. I support growth and new development in our community. However, I firmly believe all new businesses should follow the current guidelines outlined in the city ordinances. To do otherwise, could encourage others to circumvent city codes and is unfair to the existing hotel casinos. In addition, allowing this could potentially put one of our, one or more of our current hotel casino operators out of business, jeopardizing hundreds of thousands of dollars in room tax revenue and potentially job losses for White Pine County. I respectfully ask that you reject White, reject Pine West Development's request for a full casino license until they agree to comply with the current city code. Torjulie Julian Giannoli. I oppose Pine West LLC's request for a change in the Ely City Code. The current ordinance was well thought out and should not be amended for Pine West LLC. W G Holt, uh, Ely, Nevada.
Good afternoon, the following is for public comment. My name is Chris Garcia. I am writing in regards to agenda item number thirteen. Do we need another casino in the city of Ely? Maybe not. Do we need another vacant deteriorating property in the city limits? Absolutely not. I am writing in support of amending the current ordinance that requires a minimum of fifty motel, hotel rooms for a gaming establishment that has sixteen or more gaming machines. Not because I am an added supporter of the gaming industry, because I am not, but rather because I am against a poorly written ordinance that in my opinion was intended and is successfully putting up roadblocks against further development in the area. I believe the overwhelming majority want to see growth and development in the Ely area. But when we see actions to handpick what comes and what doesn't, and then wonder why it is very difficult to make progress and growth. The ordinance as it is written is pay-to-play in nature and is not how businesses should be governed. If we reverse engineered this ordinance and said that anyone wanting to operate lodging of fifty rooms or more be required to have a minimum of sixteen gaming machines, that would never fly, nor should it. Also, if lodging was truly at the heart of this ordinance, the ordinance regarding vacation rentals such as Airbnb's, uh, VRBOs, et ceteras, would be addressed and fixed because as it stands, is not overly conducive to additional lodging options in the city. Food for thought. I am certainly a supporter of small and local businesses, don't get me wrong there. But I also support a free and open market, and I believe that the consumer should be able to determine for themselves who, where they want to support. I ask the council first to consider if this ordinance is sound in nature and if it should have been created in the first place. And second, even if it was, does it still serve a beneficial purpose to your constituents as a whole today? And to vote based on that, respectfully, Chris Garcia.
Mayor and council members, I am in opposition to the request to amend the Ely City Code and eliminating the hotel text. The ordinance states there is requirement of a hotel motel with a minimum of fifty rooms in order to have a gaming license. I applaud and support new business in our area, including the Pine West project, but our area is a tourist-driven community and we rely on the room tax. I feel this project and future endeavors should be held to the same standards as our local hotel industry had to follow. Doing away with this requirement will encourage parlor gaming and open the doors for future problems. Thank you, Melanie Van Camp. And that is all I have.
Does any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Jeff Manuel, general manager for the Jeff House Motel and Casino. And I will just voice my opposition to item number thirteen. Because I think it would be significantly detrimental to the job, because you're probably the smallest casino in town.
Any other public comment? Hearing and saying that, I will close the open public comment and move on to item three. May I discuss your possible action approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items? And I believe it's, I'm sorry, quickly what item was asked to be removed of this? Was it ten or like, B eleven? Eleven, that's the, uh, the person being able to take it there, vehicle. That was requested to be removed by councilman Person, who's not here tonight. I want to hear the motion to approve the agenda with that removal, any other changes? Motion from the House, total woman, Elliot. Do I have a second? Second for councilman Al, can you hear the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other? Thank you. Item four, city department reports, fire chief. Uh, he's not here tonight, but you have his report. Uh, police chief, I don't believe Sheriff Henry is here tonight. Um, Mr. Court Judge, Judge Costa? No? Okay. Um, city attorney? Public report, we have questions. City clerk?
No, court clerk.
City treasurer?
No.
City public board supervisor? It's about a marquee basement workstation.
We could talk about that, yes. I hope that DJ finished the process for the specs on pump and orders, and they'll be going out tomorrow. The roads are on the landfill, I've got the oil pump, they started working on that today also, two, three days. The more real reason I came up was this morning, unfortunately Carl's not here tonight, he had quite a commitment. But our lead man, our water lead man Carl Seago was the word, we saved that as the world operator of the You have a question?
Uh, city wire rapport, do you have that report?
I'll keep it short, we've brought the topic already. Um, the big part, I guess I want to say is, we had our public notice, a thirty-day public notice period for our Fonzie and our notice intent for our two CBG projects of Lower Centri, we enveloped, we were calm. That thirty-day notice period is over, and we were, had no comments back coming from there, so. So we'll wrap up that paperwork and we'll get that back into, um, CBG. And I think they got a small notice, public notice period as well, so probably the next month or so, we'll get approval to, uh, proceed on that. I anticipate that just because coming down at the end of the year, the end of our fiscal year, they would probably spot those dates maybe after this next three-year starts. Because I don't think we have a chance of truly getting those projects out on the street without construction, this construction season. Water is one hundred percent for sure, because water has to go to the state. Um, and that process goes in the black hole when it gets going to the state, so it's a couple months, just going through that process, so we should know where that's going to happen. So, uh, that's kind of the big thing, the other thing we'd be really working on was, uh, we work with Mike and the road department. Road plan, we'll discuss a little bit later, and I, so. And then I also just like to commend Carl, because we do a lot of work with Carl, Carl does. Always has the best interest of the city at heart, he works very hard to get there today, so thank you, Carl, good luck, good job, Mayor.
Thank you. City Building Official?
Um, yeah, we're happy to answer your question.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to item five, an NRI Foundation report, I don't believe, uh, Mr. Vasquez City gave that tonight, but we do have his uh, report here filed, and and one of the items six, reports from the city council, we'll start with, uh, Councilwoman Williams Tarver, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilman Press?
Uh, no.
Councilman Elliott?
Nothing on the board.
Councilman Alvin?
Say, Mayor, nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Do you have my report there? I don't have anything to add tonight. Um, it is by, it passed by thirty, so we'll do the mayoral recess, we'll do item seven, the mayoral recess, the regular city council meeting for a public hearing at five thirty PM on the following topics. Councilman Carson, public hearing, discussion only. Approval to convert Murray Street to one-way traffic heading northbound to Ely Town or southbound out of town, as well as possible installation of speed bumps to the public hearings. We'll entertain comments from the public and the room in on the phone about this item. If there are any. There is.
You should know, I want to sit with the heat at gallery, so I could observe this. Still to sit with my back to the wall. Um, Terry Pitar, fourteen seventeen Mill Street. I was absent from the meeting in March when this was proposed to change Mill and Murray to one-way traffic. Um, I was glad to see Mill Street came off of that, uh, proposal, because right now we don't live on Mill Street until we get to Muffin Bell, and that is not conducive on our section of Mill Street because we already don't have the required fifty-foot roadway. However, uh, the traffic study that was done for that was done last June, so it wasn't, it's not current for today, but it may not change much. The speed bumps that you're looking to put in, possible installation, uh, Mayor, you requested those back on July fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Um, but my bigger concern with this was the, on the agenda, the signage for that, to change Mill and Murray to one-way streets, just the signage alone is ten thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, what I was told the rest of the estimate was for that cost for that project was over a million dollars, which is going to come from the RTC funds. I want to know if anyone in this council can answer for us what the cost is just to change one street to one way. If it's going to be four hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred to change one way of one street, isn't that money better spent fixing the roads right now? Because they're working their best to do that, but we have roads that already die of need. So to spend five hundred thousand dollars out of the RTC funds, and will the county be paying their half towards that?
Well, I need to be clear, the, the million dollars wasn't to change the, the routing of the streets. That was the complete, our Murray Street project.
Oh, well, in that, in that, that case as well, I can live with ten thousand dollars being spent to change signage. However, I would ask that when you choose the next contractor, please don't choose the cheapest bid, because the cheapest bid is not always the best bid, and you're going to get what you paid for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment or discussion on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing, we'll move on to item eight, discussion of possible action. Item pending for the public hearing, item one, Councilman Carson, discussion of possible action. Approve the convert Murray Street to one-way traffic heading northbound to Ely Town or southbound out of town, as well as possible installation of speed bumps. Do you want to start?
I'd like to have the, city clerk, they sent out a survey. Can you give us a quick rundown on that, so everybody gets a thorough understanding of the results of that?
I can, um, Patty was the one receiving those, um, surveys, and she prepared this schematic for us tonight, so I'll let her do that. Because she did all the work.
So there were sixty total surveys sent out to residents living on Mill and Murray Street. Um, there were forty of those not returned. There were nineteen returned, and one came back with an insufficient address. Um, there were nine people in favor. Uh, three were in favor with changes, and seven of them were opposed to any of the changes. Um, on the handout, I did include the comments, I can read those quickly for you. The in-favor comments, um, were the Ely Volunteer Fire Department fills this will improve traffic flow on Murray Street. In an emergency, it will not impact our response as we will do what is needed to respond. Next comment, I think northbound would be the best direction for traffic flow. Uh, third comment, do it. Fourth comment, southbound. Fifth comment, one-way southbound. Sixth comment, as long as there are speed bumps or something, I don't have strong feelings about north or south travel. And one more comment said northbound. In favor with changes comments, number one, one thing that was not brought up at the meeting is the Old Murray Street School will increase traffic on Murray when it opens as the daycare. I feel that increases, that increases the importance of keeping Mill a two-way street. Comment two, Murray Street, southbound, granted there is snow removal in winter, or you'll have the same issue. I would also like to see completed sidewalks for pedestrians on both Murray and Mill Street. However, I think the monies would be better served repairing existing streets or repaving everywhere. Third comment, northbound, down Murray Street into town. And there was just one comment I opposed. I currently prefer to park my truck in front of my property on the east side of Murray Street facing south in the winter. The cabin engines stay warmer and easier to clean snow off. I am not sure pedestrian traffic is currently impeded by the current situation, not much of a problem now. I am okay with the pedestrian congestion and traffic on Murray, and I need to drive both ways on Murray Street. I park on the sidewalk, sidewalk a little to get out of the snowplowway and the other trucks driving on Murray Street. I've had vehicles hit by other drivers before, one parked fully on the street. I have not damaged the curb or sidewalk. And that is all from the surveys.
Thank you. Um, part of this instigation, as I understood it, was, uh, Councilman Al was, uh, very good point that the asphalt and construction on Mill Street is thicker and higher that the asphalt and construction on Mill Street is thicker and higher constructed to take heavier traffic. And if we diverted, you know, any of the heavier traffic that seems to errantly find its way down Murray Canyon onto Murray Street, all that work we've done, that road hasn't been built to carry heavy highway traffic at all. We didn't want to damage all that work we've done. And I thought this was a, a good compromise on the issue, and helped some alleviate some of the congestion and parking issues and... Like, one of the respondents right there said he's had his truck hit, or somebody has had their truck hit there in Longwood Park down there, so...
But I have one question, it's, it's, boys and girls, I've got a list of them. Where's that main entrance going to be for the boys and girls club?
It's going to be up Murray Street.
Up Murray, okay, so, I think that's a good point, because kids dart across the road, you got two-way traffic, you're worrying about it. And having the one-way traffic, they can actually turn on, look, first avenue or whatever it is to get off that way, drop off kids too, so... I think having the traffic going southbound, we already have signs going, not southbound, I mean northbound, signs warning young children, play, we're going to put speed bumps in, that's one of the plans, to slow things down, so... Keeping the kids entering the school on the Murray Street side, that'd be great.
Well, and the speed bumps that I requested on my part were, I mean, we usually get complaints about speeders in any neighborhood you're in, and usually the, the suggestion is put a stop sign there, but stop signs are not speed control measures as recommended by the MUTCD. So if we want to slow down traffic there, my, my recommendation is, is speed bumps, and I'd like to see that as part of the, as part of that. Do you check?
Uh, if we did, the one-way on Murray is still a ten thousand, just an additional ten thousand, or two million.
Does he do like drawings you have here that, that are, remember you, uh, feel like, personally, you're to me?
Yeah, so, um, you know, what, uh, Ms. Penner said earlier, which was, I'm here to talk about the cost of that. Even the mayor was correct, that is the cost of to keep the road off all the way to the end, is a part of the, is a part of the project, is a part of making the money in the street. And so the rough cost for, you know, signages and everything else, and I guess is about ten thousand dollars, and so... The rest of it, um, if we went back in there and then a little, they mentioned, I mean, out of the option of making a little bit of change down to the very end, so that we don't, we, we don't have the wide intersection, we actually create a ninety down there, that little thing. Um, you know, that's very minimal in, in additional costs of those projects, so... I don't think changing this to a one-way would be a major cost, uh, that's a lot beyond that, that's a lot.
But you don't have an actual number?
I don't actually have an actual number.
I talked last time about northbound versus southbound. I guess this is kind of if we do the ninety, and then it's the northbound or the southbound, right? Or should, or should we...
Correct, and so if, if you come in here and we end up doing something similarly to that ninety intersection there, I don't really have a preference either way, you know, I'm fine with either way, in and out of town or out of town.
Can I ask, will you, will you give a preference?
Sure.
Since the, do you guys have a preference?
What's that?
North or southbound?
For the daycare.
Whatever works best for the, uh...
Yeah, best for the community. If we created a parking lot on that Mills, on the Murray Street side, it would be for in and out, so the one-way, either way would be best, I think.
Whatever makes you smile, DJ, he's gonna smile.
We're out here to be the engineer. Thank you. I have pretty good questions and comments, but...
So I think, yeah, the city will pick northbound, probably.
I made a motion to go northbound, or, uh, let's go quarters, and again, doesn't make much difference. I did Mill Street, definitely a two-way.
Uh, I like that, maybe northbound, just because we do have truck issues sometimes, and if we keep that northbound, that can't go down, the police won't assign the city, you know, it's running, so, you know, northbound.
I don't know how often they're...
Or is it southbound? I guess that would...
I don't, I don't know how often they end up hitting on the wrong street.
Okay.
But if, if, if each, if one road is one-way and her road is the other, they can have to go at some time, and that's what we want to avoid. So if Mill Street stays two-way, the next thing on that road, I don't know.
And keep, and go make Murray southbound, which would be going out of town? Direction, do you think?
No, you, say you're coming off Murray Street? And you're going to head down Murray Street, southbound like that. See, some of the biggest worry, I believe, with eighteen widers is their follow their GPS, I mean, they get it behind the courthouse canyon too. But we have signage, you know, right there on Altman, one-way only, you know, they follow that pretty cool. And then, again, I think old-school truckers, even the new ones, Mill Street, the old US Highway Six, probably pops up and they go that way. Very little truck traffic coming through this down other than the line, downtown, I mean.
So we want making northbound going into town, so...
Yeah, you go in north, northbound one-way, going down Murray Street. Again, it's like those, people all say either way, it's a one-way street. So I'll make a motion northbound on Murray Street.
So it's good speed bumps?
Uh, and now, those little speed bumps that the sidewalk operators will hit?
They will hit those, I'm sure.
They'll learn from where they're at.
This is how I make sure I don't have to do this job another four years. Um, so I have a motion from Councilon Allred, uh, for northbound one-way traffic on Murray Street, uh, with possibility, uh, adding speed bumps. Do I have a second for that?
I'll say it.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper, do I need further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair and equal. Uh, item nine, items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Councils recommended by the municipal zoning board. Item one, board members, City Engineer Alford, discussion for possible action, award. I need to probably extend this, as I was involved in creating some of these bids.
Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Williams Harper, Mayor Protowns, I think you're on deck?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, I just lost my...
Mayor, just before we begin, is, is that the disclosure, just that you were...
I work for a company that participated in the bidding process, and I participated in preparing that bid.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, uh, uh, City Engineer Alford, discussion for possible action, award a bid for construction of landfill, South Run, on ditch P W P, W P dash twenty twenty-three dash one six three.
Um, this is the runoff ditch for the landfill, uh, comes around, uh, the south side of it, protecting the landfill from, from flash floods and runoff. Um, we prepared our, we received four bids on this project, uh, which is actually pretty good for our projects. A lot of times we don't receive four bids. Um, of the way the project was set up, we got base bid of, of doing ditch, and then we also had, um, some alternates, as in, the reason we had alternates is because to, to save money for the city, we had the potential of a landfill crews with their equipment, grow up into the site, taking the topsoil. And so we put that as a bad alternative, we needed two for cost. And then also to complete out the river rap, it's like geoprotech, off fabric, for that as an alternative, because we didn't have enough to run for. And so when we started this project, um, design-wise, uh, the budget that we had together for this was three hundred thirty-five thousand, because as a part of the original plans, there was a plan to have a runoff ditch, and also a potential pond that would catch that water on the bottom side of that ditch. Um, once we started into the design process, we were able to come up with an option where we could actually create a ditch, and if we carried that water over one road, draw to the north, we'd actually be able to eliminate that, that pond. And so, because that pond was to protect, because that water would come down the draw, they would run into more shocks, uh, the dock pound and such, and so it was a... So during, during the design process, we were able to make that ditch work, we go one more to draw to north, so we don't, so we are not affected by, uh, the runoff in our property down there, in our building. And so we saved quite a bit of money by not having to do that runoff pond, or collection pond. And so when the bids come in, the locator was from Kirch Construction for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred. Um, second bid was for two hundred and twelve thousand, uh, third bid was two hundred and seventeen five hundred, and the high bid was for four hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-seven. Um, we reached out and talked to Kirch Construction, and they were not concerned about the bid price, because they are obviously pretty low. But I'm also concerned about it for myself, because even in our cost estimate, this is actually pretty close to our cost estimate for the ditch. Um, the other thing is, um, as a part of the bid package, there was a requirement, they provided in three projects that they had completed, uh, in similar scope. Um, one of them was about the same cost as this project, the other two that they completed were actually higher than this. Um, and so we actually called those references and talked to those references, and we got very good references from them. Two of them was actually for government projects, and, uh, you know, everyone that we talked to was like, hey, we're a pleasure to work with, we hope to take it on our project next time. And so I feel, um, confident, based on what we have in here, that the city should award this to Kirch, because they were the alligators, and also they're...
What are they out?
They're out. And it's utility fees, morning.
Is that recommendation with all alternatives as well?
Correct, yes.
So, do we have a motion, uh, to award this?
I'll make that motion to award the bid to Kirch Construction for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Alford, and who's that, Andy Tipp, Mr. Press?
Yes.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, item two, board members, City Clerk, please, discussion for possible action, approval to remove past the utility fee penalties up to the amount of two hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents from seventeen First Street, Miguel Nevada, at the request of the property owner, David Harris. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair and equal, so ordered. Item three, board members, City Clerk, please, discussion for possible action. Approval to remove past the utility fee penalties of the amount of six hundred and thirty-two dollars and six cents from Major Place RV Park, Ely, Nevada, at the request of property owner, T and T C L L C. Uh, I'll entertain a motion. Motion from Councilman Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Quickly, second from, uh, Councilman Trask, continue the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At a court, board members, City Clerk, please, discussion for possible action, approval to remove past the utility fee penalties of the amount of four hundred and seventy-one dollars and eight cents from, uh, third, second street, number three, second street, Miguel Nevada, at the request of property owner, Ann Reckman and Steve Kay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll approve.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it into order. Item five, board members, City Clerk, please, discussion for possible action. Approval to remove past the utility fee penalties of the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventeen cents from fifteen Juniper Street, with Nevada, at the request of property owner, Mauricio Garcia. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll approve.
Motion from Councilman Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Trask, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it into order. Item six, board members, City Clerk, please, discussion for possible action. Approval to remove past the utility fee penalties of the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents uh, from fifty-five East, four hundred North, Long Nevada, at the request of property owner, Gubler Living Trust, CO, uh, Conan Gubler. I'll entertain a motion. All right, motion. Motion from Councilman Trask, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper, any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, let's do this first, uh, the lady finish.
Oh, okay. Um, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. Councilman.
I just have a general question, just to make sure, when we're approving items such as these, um, do we have something that says this person has asked for this more than one time or more than two times? I guess I'm just looking, um, for the exact process, so the same people don't keep coming to us. I just want that explained, perhaps, uh, City Clerk, please, can explain that to me?
So, um, Councilwoman Williams Harper, um, each case is individual. In the case of, uh, the five that were approved tonight, each of these property owners inherited, um, this landfill balance due from the previous owners, and, um, they elect, the new owners elected to pay the principal due, and then they each submitted a request to, um, my office that the penalties be brought before the board is to be waived.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item ten, the consent agenda, we have minutes from March ninth and March twenty-third, and bills from March twenty-second and March thirty.
Well, somebody like to disclose, I'm a, a past member, thirty-six years with the Ely Volunteer Fire Department, some of these bills benefit some of my privileges of being the next volunteer partner, but I believe I proved these areas, it's all for the best interest of the society.
Thank you. I'll also disclose, my husband's a member of all of your fellow department, and he doesn't get treated any differently than any other member on that because of these bills, and I don't vote on this anyway, so... With that, I'll entertain a motion, are questions on these two items?
I think I'll motion this one out.
Motion to approve the minutes and bills. Second from...
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Elliott. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to new business here. As there are only four members of the council tonight, uh, please be advised that, uh, for an item to pass, it has to have either three votes. In this case, the mayor does get to break a tie. If I get the vote on something, that's exciting. Um, and then for these items here in our new business, unless a council member has a question, uh, a staff member or somebody who, uh, has something to do with this item, there won't be any public comment. So, with that, we'll do, uh, item B, new business, item one, Mayor Robertson, Nevada Division of Child and Family Services Representatives. Representative Randy Holbrook, Social Services Manager, three, discussion only. Presentation regarding a common crisis related to foster care and temporary shelter for children in the city.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I apologize, my, my speaking voice has been a little taxed or anything. Um, as you said, my name is Randy Holbrook, and I work at Division of Child and Family Services in Child Protection. And, um, I cover four rural counties, to include Wympine, Elko, Rander, and Yoricka. Um, I've been in Child Protection Services for twenty years, um, out of based at the Elko office. But for the past ten years, I've been either in a supervisor or a manager role, including the city of Ely. And so, this month, April, is Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. And so we often do pinwells, and do events to try to raise awareness. But this month, I want to talk to you about some real issues, about child abuse and neglect that you're facing in the city of Ely today. You have a community crisis. And I believe that knowledge is power, so that's why I'm here tonight. I believe that if you have the knowledge, then as leaders of your community, and leaders with agencies like mine, we can make a difference. So for tonight, I'm just here to present to you and give you some knowledge, so that you can use that to hopefully make a change for your very vulnerable population. That population is children who have been abused or neglected, and they must be displaced from their home. It is a state of emergency, and you have nowhere for those children to go. You're not alone, many other counties and cities are facing the same issue. But I have to ask, if a child in Ely had to be placed out of their home today, and they didn't have a relative or a affected kid member who could take them in immediately, where would they go? The reality is, I don't know. Children in these situations are currently staying in hotels, they enroll the back. DCFS staff are staying with them, they're stepping up. This is not their job. They still are going to work eight to five, but in the evenings, they don't know what to do, and they don't want these children to be homeless. So they are going and staying in hotels. And it's unfortunate that I'm here tonight to tell you, out of the seven children that are in hotels, you have a child in a hotel. When the staff from DCFS are no longer able to do this, one staff member had a hundred and one hours of overtime in a two-week period. If that can no longer happen, then I ask again... If that can no longer happen, then I ask again, where will your children go? And again, I don't know. So I'm going to give you a little bit of thoughts of how we went from a crisis to now being into a state of emergency. I'm gonna have to take a drink of water today. They told me to hurry because you guys have a big agenda, so I'm trying to speak really fast, so. Prior to the pandemic, um, we had had a few discussions about that this was in a state of crisis. However, we all know on March twentieth, or March fifteenth of twenty-twenty, Nevada shut down. What did that mean for this vulnerable population? That means people in families who were poverty or addiction, mental health, or in jobs, um, that businesses closed. So they already were with limited coping mechanisms or already in those limited jobs and then they didn't have jobs. There was no schools, no daycares, and those people had poor coping mechanisms. So what did happen in my region during the pandemic? We had one child fatality due to child abuse and neglect, and we had one near fatality. We had zero COVID deaths related to children. On March seventeenth of twenty-twenty, your local Ely office and your staff here knew that they could not close. We were an agency that needed to be responding to homes where children were on safety plans, delivering food and checking in with this population. And I believe, I read this out because it's fairly important, and I heard it brought up earlier today in some of the public comments. The state of the economy, so we all know where that's at. Groceries are higher, things are like that. Voluntarism's down. If you're on a fire department or other departments, that's down. So the people who used to be able to step up and be foster parents aren't able to do that. If they were a one-income family before the pandemic, they might be a two-income family now. If you are a two-income family and you're barely making it, you might be a three or four-income family now. And you're not even seeing your own kids. So to step up and be a foster parent, that's on the decline. The second thing I'm going to bring up about the state of emergency is the opioid, fentanyl, and substance abuse crisis. But fentanyl is the game changer for us. My job at DCFS and your staff here is to prevent removal. We know that if we remove a child from a family home, it's the most traumatic event they will ever experience in their life. So our job is not to remove children. So we try to keep them in the home and we work really hard to do that. But fentanyl is a game changer for that to happen because we don't even know at this point what they may come into contact with. And we know that that can kill them. So increase in, um, kids coming into care and a decrease in volunteerism has now created where we're at today. Again, I told you I was going to give you knowledge. It may not be very favorable knowledge, might not be what you want to hear. Again, I tell you, you're not alone. And because I work with those four counties, I'm speaking to all four of my counties. I'm speaking to all of the city councils in my region and talking to them because you all are in this same situation. And so I don't have a solution, but now I've given you the knowledge and I believe in leaders to collaborate, to come to a table, to collaborate with the state, with your other communities, think outside the box. Because having children in a hotel with DCFS staff, um, I've heard some people say, well, it's better than nothing. So I'm going to leave you with this. And I leave you with, the solutions are up to you. Think outside the box. Think about transitional living for teenagers sixteen and eighteen, because that's a population that also is, is in, needs a home. But they also, if you have a teenager, you know they're already, they're already detaching from you as a parent. The last thing they want is a newborn dad every time they blow a placement. So we need transitional living for them. We need shelter care, much like what Washoe and Clark have, where it's a shelter care where children can be taken in the middle of the night. Someone is waiting for them. They have food. They have a bed. They have a meal. We don't have that in Long Nevada. We have many locations where they, you guys use a centralized juvenile detention center, um, and also a Great Basin, the Great Basin Child Housing Center. So you guys already, as the four counties and other cities, collaborate on many other issues. So I ask you to think about all the possibilities. We need foster homes desperately. Kids need to stay in their communities. So I'm going to leave you with this. If a child had been removed tomorrow, whether they're an infant, a toddler, a school-aged toddler, a teenager, I don't know where they're going to go. It could be a hotel. I told you that is, being removed from their home is the most traumatic event. You couple that with being removed from your community, your school, your neighbors. And most often, if you have a sibling, you will be removed from them. And then I tell you, hey, Johnny, guess what? I don't have anywhere else for you to go. So I'm going to take you to a hotel and right now, that might be here or it might be in Carson City. Until I can find you somewhere to go. So I've heard it said, well, at least they have somewhere to go. But right now, your teenager who's sitting in a hotel is sitting there feeling abandoned, rejected, and that no one wants her. And that's where she's sitting tonight, in her space. So that's where I leave you to, to resonate and to think, what can we do? Thank you. Got any questions?
How many foster families are in Ely?
You have three. Beds are full. Um, yes, your beds are full. Um, for your Ely children, you have seven children in legal foster care right now. Today, that point could change. And what I'm looking at is what was occurring today in the office, the possibility of having, uh, sixteen children out of Ely could happen tomorrow. Um, so one is in Clark, one is in a hotel, and two are in, um, Lund.
So, in my meetings with other mayors around the state, this problem has come up a number of times. One of the problems that they, uh, opine on, and I don't, I don't know much about the system or how the system works, but they said that they have lost a number of foster families off the rolls in their communities because the children have become so much more troubled that bringing those kind of children into their homes has become a problem. Is that something factual from your side?
Yes, the, the, we just talked about this in our managers' meeting. The, the foster care system was designed and stuff for nineteenth-century kids with nineteenth-century problems. We're dealing with twenty-first century kids with twenty-first century problems. So we're talking, it's got to be revamped, the system, and in that, we're, we're working towards that bit. The kids do have significant problems. Which is also why some of your kids can't be placed here. You don't have the services to meet your children's needs. So that does create some barriers. Um, I would say the legislation has went to a kind of a community-based thought process where, you know, kids shouldn't be institutionalized, agree with that. Kids shouldn't be jailed, I agree with that. But some kids need that. And so they're moving to community-based services and that's great if you live in Washoe County or Clark County. But you don't have the community-based services that they're talking about there that would meet those same needs. And so, um, I was asked yesterday, I'm, they, I was asked why I was here and Carson City wasn't, um, in the meeting yesterday. And so what I would tell them is, is I don't even know if your legislators are aware of the significant problems your communities are facing. We're not allowed to talk to them and we're not allowed to put bills forward.
Why is that?
Because I'm a state employee and there's regulations, because we love our regulations and laws. So state employees are not allowed to move forward. That was information that I have based on my employment. As a community member, I can go, but it can't be based on knowledge that I have. So now I've given you knowledge and power.
Well, I, I want to let you know that this is something that has come up, uh, in other cities and the, in the Vanderleek cities, this is something they've been working on as well. You know, they've had a lot of discussions in the valley. So, so it is on, it's, it's definitely on mayors and councils' radar for sure. But I'm sure we have many good solutions for you unfortunately.
I should, I should probably disclose, disclose that Mayor Dana Holbrook and Carlin Vada is my husband.
Oh. We never have a couple of researchers, they're nasty.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
That's okay.
It's a long view, all right?
I agree. Any other questions?
Yes. No.
Very long day, I mean, I get it. I've had the same.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Uh, we're going to move to these next two, two through seven and then have a ten-minute break. Uh, item two, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approved mayoral appointment of Bill Wolfe to the City Tree Board. Term expires December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. I have appointed him. I'm looking for your approval.
I'll make the motion. Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion from Councilman Horace, second from Councilwoman Elliott. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any progress? Item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Acceptance of Irene Chachus' resignation from the City Tree Board effective April sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll make my motion.
Motion from Councilwoman Williams Harper, do I have a second? Motion from Councilman Bass, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approved mayoral appointment of Candy Church to the City Tree Board with term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
After reading her, uh, write-up, her impressive letter, I'll make the motion to appoint Candy Church.
Motion from Councilman Horace, do I have a second?
I'll second that. She is amazing.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approved mayoral appointment of Harry Ray to the City Tree Board with term expires December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Make the motion.
Motion from Councilman Horace, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Trance, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry into order. Item six, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approved mayoral reappointment of Candace Campo to the City Tree Board with term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion from Councilman Elliott. Do I have a second?
All second.
Second from Councilman Trance, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, I could say seven, I probably missed all of the disapproval. Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approval to participate in the Stagecoach Women's Project's environmental assessment and permitting process as a cooperating agency.
I'll make. I'll make a motion.
Motion from Councilwoman Harper, do I have a second?
All second.
Second from Councilman Elliott, any further discussion on the side? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry into order. Uh, we'll wait for ten minutes.
I don't know.
With that, we will close this discussion item and move on to item twelve, Councilman Elliott, number one, supervisory grant, discussion for possible action, selection of cemetery storage building for budgeted for fiscal twenty twenty. The city deely is a vibrant mountain community whose mission is to enhance the quality of life for those who live in or visit our city by being responsive to public input and providing fiscally responsible and exceptional municipal services which contribute to our unique communities development.
The word term was removed, substitute vibrant, I'll make that motion with justice.
Motion from Councilman Allwirth, go ahead, a second. I'll make it. Second from Councilman Trask, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. Item ten, Councilman Carson, uh, Councilman Allwirth, discussion only, review of report by city engineer and public court supervisor on roads damaged due to extreme weather conditions, review city engineer's cost estimates for damaged roads and discuss possible funding, possible funding options.
Okay, BJ, can you help me out with this right here? First thing I'd like to say, you know, this is, everybody knows the conditions of our street. And first of all, Almond is not the city street at state highway, so blame that one on them. One of the biggest points in this, this plan this group put together is. Potholes, they got the biggest crosshairs on them. So they're going after them, there's some major intersections, the road completely destroyed, but the potholes are the ones you hit, they knock your front end out of alignment. So if you see a pothole or hit one, and over and over, you know, give City Hall a call, and Mike and his crew, they'll go out there, we've been actually putting a cone in so you get a better idea. This is gonna be a long process, it's gonna take a lot of money, but we're working on a, a great plan, and I'll turn it over to engineers that design, thank you.
Yeah, this is a, this is a plan that's in work in progress. What we're doing with this plan is we come back here, we look at it, and Mike and I drove over the streets and looked. And so we're trying to come in and get our, what we use, our major view, huge routes that get us to, you know, critical facilities, our hospitals, our schools, you know, other facilities like that. And we're trying to create them as some arterials, whatever you wanna call them, where those are gonna be our main streets, we're gonna focus on, front beginning to try to get them, uh, in adequate condition so that no matter where you live in the community, you can hopefully from your residence or wherever, take a, a short route to get to these arterials, and you get where you wanna go within the city. As Jim said, our first goal is to come in here and fix these major potholes around this thing, some of the things are identified in this plan, um, you know, the crews have already addressed and already passed some of them. This is also work in progress with the standpoint of what we're trying to do with this, we have a meeting on Tuesday, we're back in, or we're working with, also with the county road department as well, so we're trying to use our existing city-county, uh, road work agreement where we can work together with each other. And so we're trying to come in there, the process of kind of compiling their major needs from this winter. This is our kind of major needs, and we're gonna come back and see what we can join together and work sheriff services and forces to do that. One of the things that we have in here, we're still working on, we have, we do not have a cost estimate together with this today, um, we're waiting to hear back from, um, some contractors and stuff for different prices, because we anticipate, um, we are gonna have to need some assistance with some of this site to, uh, to get some of this work completed. Also, some of these roads, um, in this plan is included in the back is what Endo's classification are for our roads, and Endo's classification of our roads, um. I'll, I'll reach out to Endo and have some more conversation with them, but if we are able to obtain some grants and potential on some of these roads are, that are identified by Endo, um, I believe some of those grants can come at a cost participation of five percent match, and so that'd be very beneficial to us, uh, to be there. I don't know the exact details of which grants are available there, but I do know that that is a possibility on those roads, and so we'll continue to work that process, uh, we'll work with the county this coming week on some more things, and we'll see what we can work on.
I'd just like to add, BJ, that we're gonna go after this here, most of this is gonna be temporary repairs because the weather still, uh, will conducive to good weather, temperature conditions, but we're going to work outside the box on some of the repairs, experiment a few, and document what they did different than in past years to see how they hold up for future use, so it's gonna be a, a, as BJ says, work in progress. So just be patient, but again, if you see a real terrible pothole, and there's a really good one, for example, that, it's on Orson, when you come down Orson, going onto Almond, that's a terrible sucker, and let me tell you, but the thing is, that's on the state highway side, but it's right on the edge of our street, that's a rotten one there, so, and there's a few more, so that's, please call the city so we can relay that message over to the state highway and see if you get that, that's a good, it's a good, so, just be patient, and let's hear from you out there, if you know, pick a nasty bottom, let us know, we'll try to address it ASAP, thanks.
So there is a, a coordinating meeting with the county that was scheduled for tomorrow, but I think it got moved to next week?
It got moved next Tuesday.
Okay, yes.
And so that's Tuesday.
Is that just so that people could compile their cost and information more, or?
Correct, 'cause based on our first meeting we had, trying to coordinate some things together, the, the, the main goal of that thing was, hey, let's go apart and each figure out what we, important on our side that we need to do, they can do the same plan on their side, they'll come back and try to merge our things together some time.
And I know the county's been working on the, uh, within the parameters of the emergency declaration that the governor's office made a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, everybody's looking for any possible funding out there, whether that's FEMA, or working with the state highway, or, or does anybody, who's money out there to throw at this, we wanna, we want to throw it?
Absolutely, and I think one other thing to come in and say, there's a lot of what we're putting costs together, is looking at trying to, some of our roads in East City are extremely wide, and so we're not trying to do necessarily, current, current, we're trying to do where the traffic actually drives, and so trying to stretch our dollars as far as we possibly can, because, um, you know, we can go long or we can go wide, and I think we'd rather go long where people actually travel down the long distance.
Ken, could we ask you to talk to the state highway, 'cause just like the issue at the bottom of Orson, I, I think there's one with being a Bobcat too, that's in the same issue, it's probably within the state right away.
I think Bobcat is one of the ones that I'm referring to here, that they actually have put some, hatched some timber stuff in there, so Bobcat is a much better situation right than it was two days ago.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
Can I, can I just please thank our guys that work for the city? This has been a horrendous winter, I see them out all hours of the night, and it's cold, and, uh, I just wanna thank them for all they do, and I have the utmost patience, and I know that they will get all these potholes and things taken care of, but I, I just wanna remember to say thank you to these guys.
Absolutely, thank you, BJ. Uh, with that, we will close this discussion item and move on to item twelve, Councilwoman Elliott, number one, supervisory grant, discussion for possible action, selection of cemetery storage building for budgeted for fiscal twenty twenty.
Well, we, I put out, uh, to four contractors, and we see, we see pretty close, uh, with, uh, shelter construction with seventy-nine thousand, or from their. They, that was a thirty by thirty building, we asked for twenty-four. So.
Is that just because there's a standardized supplier that they got, or?
Yeah.
Did they have?
I, 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 when talking to him, he uses Clary or something. And we did get a quote from Clary of Roper also.
Yeah, so the quote is not in compliance with the bid intention, should be entertained or accepted?
Okay.
And so that will bring us to Clary, which was forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And Roper, and then Clary, they, they cannot guarantee that they'd be done or started by July first. And then Roper buildings was. Forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, they were all dead, and they did build it, they'd be done by, by July first. So that would be my recommendation for, for this.
Okay, don't be, the devil's advocate, you're a building inspector, may I have the help on this right here?
I do have it.
So I've got several items, I should, should have to it. The very first thing, again, I'm, I'm not a carpenter, I can bang a lot of fingers, but the trust, uh, Clary has a four-twelve roof pitch, Roper's set three-twelve, so it's not a big deal, four-twelve versus three-twelve, I don't know what the spec was for that building.
So I, I've kind of orbited, uh, Mike about this, uh, the important thing is not necessarily the pitch, but to make sure that we meet the required snow load.
Okay, so Clary's snow load is sixty pounds per square foot, Roper's forty-two, that's still within the, the.
Forty-two is the roof snow load that's required, sixty would be the ground snow load, I would have to review the bids to ensure that, that both of those are, are separate issues.
Talking to the Roper representative, he then told me, well, the most, we had no problem, okay, we're not adjusting.
Next area finishes, Clary has a lifetime warranty, thirty years paid, Roper says nothing about any warranty. Then, uh, so I'll, I'll just throw that out there. The, when you get to the concrete, you know, the motor of twenty-four by thirty, seven, that's seven hundred and twenty square feet by Clary, but, uh, Roper says eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, I don't know, maybe they got a different calculator than me, it should have been the same there, but, uh, the, uh, Clary one shows they're gonna form a pore in the concrete with saw cut relief joints, Roper mentions they're gonna put in rebar, but Clary doesn't. So I don't know if that's, is that, which weight can be that, uh, boom truck, the boom truck?
Yeah, some quick.
But I don't know if that four inches, they're gonna put fiber in it or whatever, makes it stronger in that part, I don't know.
Do you require?
Um, no, not in slabs, but obviously we're comfortable.
Okay, so that's a question there, the overhead door, Clary's, uh, putting in an insulated one, Roper is non-insulated. The big one to me is the excavation, Clary is gonna prep the site, excavate, Roper is not, they're gonna have somebody else do it.
Real good.
The city will do it. Was that same option offered to Clary?
That wasn't ever mentioned.
Okay, so that'd be, if that's the case for Clary, that would be a cost, if we went with that, that would lower that down. I think that was a major one, I don't know if we need to, basically gets down the difference of eighteen hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and, and in my opinion, I, looks to me like Clary's giving us a little more, you know, uh, if Roper has it done by other, the, they're gonna give you an idea what the excavation could cost, if they go in there and they get somebody to do it, they come in, that would be three thousand dollars, who's gonna eat that? I mean, I guess if, you know, it was over there at four thousand, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, and that's an unknown, if they're gonna eat that, I can't really believe they don't wanna eat that.
Sure.
So I don't know if you wanna talk to them, and I, I, I'd have to ask the, the mountain finance director, if, if Clary was to get the bid, and they can't get it done by June thirtieth?
We did talk about that.
Okay, can it carry over?
It doesn't carry over. I would just have to re-budge the.
Okay. We need to know that before your final question. Thank you very much. Strangled.
I go back, I mean, it's.
Yeah, but if, I feel better having these answered, you know, I mean, the same minor, there's something about the man doors too different, again, you know, that they're, uh, Roper's three foot by seven foot, the walk door for Clary is three foot by six foot eight, where, where it makes a difference, I don't know.
Yeah. Were those details about, like, the garage door and stuff like that, were those part of our stacks that we put out?
We did put it out, we just put it out for, since it was under fifty thousand dollars, we just went out and contracted.
Said, hey, give us a price for a thirty by one four building?
Yes.
No other details were provided?
Okay.
Other than those pole arms.
Yeah, so you could, you could ask.
Three floor, the fifteen by, or twelve by twelve.
You could ask Roper if they could provide some of those items?
Absolutely.
And then the other one was the pad, about the, the rebar in the pad? Yeah.
Again, it's not required, but if they wanted to put it as an option or fiber mesh, or.
Yeah.
either something that would be appropriate.
And actually, I could go back and talk to, did they try to call shop recently, and they, they won't do anything?
I, I'd like to, since the treasurer said we're gonna have to probably, well, the questions come around now, whether or not, if it was to go to Roper, they said if you get it done, we're gonna delay it by two weeks.
And that, yeah.
And that may file that up, I don't know, like, my recommendation is just get all, compare apples to apples, as close as we can, those non-apples and oranges, and bring them back, and then the treasurer says that we'll have a hard number to go right in with, but that would be my.
Then you could find out if that two weeks is gonna make anything for getting done by the.
Sure. And you know, you know, Mr. Mayor, it's hard to say, oh, Roper may come back, says we're gonna do anything you want us to do for the same price.
Then? So, okay, so the motion would be table, pending more information for the meeting in two weeks?
Sure.
Yeah?
Okay, I'll admit that motion.
Motion from Councilman Alors, second from Councilwoman Williams-Harper, any further questions?
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Elliott? Should have eaten sandwich. Any further questions? Here we go. Call for the vote.
Aye. Aye.
Any other motion table? Item thirteen, Councilwoman Elliott, discussion for possible action, review Pine West LLC request for a N C D C code by eliminating hotel requirement text from section three dash five dash thirteen, with possible direction, the city attorney to draft an ordinance for a first reading. So this, as we mentioned before, is, is something that the council, and I feel as well, needs to be addressed one way or the other. There's conflicting language in the current code as it sits. Whatever the pleasure of the council is, if they just wanna remove the May and replace it with a Shao, or they want to look at something different altogether, I think my druthers on this is that the council would consider just opening the ordinance to be adjusted one way or the other, without a prejudice or favoring one side or the other at the moment, so the discussion could be had. But that correction needs to be made one way or the other, so that we're not in this position down the road again. And for the public's awareness, this is going to be the first time that this ordinance has ever been used or tried or addressed since it got enacted in twenty-seventeen, hasn't been another business that has come in requesting to look at this. And part of the reason that you had a business coming is because there was vague language in the code that would imply that the council had some discretion to approve or deny a business license on this. I am not in favor of indeterminate discretion on a legislative body's part. It needs to be based on some kind of information. It needs to be based on criteria that can be replicated, so that we're not putting the city's legal rear end out in the wind, for that reason, but that's my two cents on this, is there anything else you wanted to add on that, it's your right.
I mean, there's a lot of info and opinions out there, and I think one thing that I just want to make aware to everybody is, not every county in Nevada has an ordinance requirement. There is a Nevada-arrived statute that does state that populations with over seven hundred thousand people are required to have hotel rooms. So Clark County, Washoe County, they are regulated by that. Every other county, it's subjective for them to kind of govern as they will, so Carson City, Douglas County, White Heine County has an ordinance with thirty rooms, and also Lincoln County currently have an ordinance in place, the other counties do not. And West Wendover is currently the only incorporated city in Nevada that has room requirements. So Ferling, Elko, Fallon, Menorca, Yarit, and Carley Wells, those are cities in Nevada that don't have any sort of room requirement. So we don't wanna go back and negate the good work that this council did in twenty-seventeen, at the time it made sense. And that's the beauty of the justice system, is you get to look at it, and you get to amend things, and you get to see what works at the current time. So I, I don't like the room requirement personally, myself either. I, I like somebody commented and said it was a pay-to-play. And I don't wanna feel like we're picking sides, and I feel like we do need to come to a solid, this is our ordinance, we need to look at the verbiage, and we need to clean it up.
And I think if the council will indulge me on that request, I, I think we'll have, be able to have an open conversation on how we address, because it is a heavily regulated industry, again, and it needs to be regulated in our community in some fashion. And I think if the council will indulge me on that request to open that up, we can look at what would be best for our community, whether that's continuing with the room requirement, just cleaning up the language, so that the council's discretion has to be based on parameters, or however they wanna go with that, I think that would be the best option. Because, you know, there are, there are a number of communities across the state, and I don't know that we have to reinvent the wheel. It always makes me concerned if the city is the only city doing something, we're either on the cutting edge of something great, or we're way out in left field, and we shouldn't be, but it's one of the two. So I think, I think having that discussion is, is worth having. And, and like I said, currently, the ordinance has conflicting language on May and Shao, set in the very short span, and it, it needs to be cleaned up as to one or the other.
Mayor?
Yes?
I agree too that the ordinance needs to be cleaned up. I feel very strongly that, and, and this is difficult, I have a firm understanding of why we might like to keep it the way it is, but my, the other side of me says, I want to make sure, and I'm going to agree with Sam that says, we don't look like we're a pay-to-play. I wanna make sure that we are an open community, and that we're welcoming to businesses, any type of business that wants to open that is appropriate, so our community can grow. We have to look at what our community is going to look like ten, twenty-five, fifty years down the road. So I think, you know, we, the ordinance does really need to be cleaned up, and I, I, I don't know, I still think that, that we need some discussion, but I will say again, I can understand why those want it to remain the same, but I also wanna make sure that we are not boxing ourselves in every time a new business wants to come in. I mean, commerce is what makes the world go round, we know that we really do need hotel rooms. I agree with one of our constituents when they said, we are a historic attraction, and people come here to vacation and learn and other things. So I may have said that, and may not have answered some questions, but I guess my question is, are we looking tonight to make that May or Shao? Is that what we're looking for this evening?
That's not what's on the agenda tonight, Councilwoman Williams-Harper. What's on the agenda tonight is to direct the city attorney to start the process of opening that ordinance, so that we can have the discussion on, do we change it from May and Shao to May or Shao in total? Or do we want to change the parameters entirely, and that's, or do away with the parameters as they are? That's the, that's what's on the agenda, is to open that up.
Okay, well, that's what I thought in my mind, I, I think that's what I was really asking, and so we are not ready to come to that decision that many people want to hear this evening, because our attorneys still has to do some work, am I correct in saying that?
Well, my recommendation is that the council remove its discretion. I think that's the best legal option going forward, so that we don't make a decision today with this business, and a council five years from now making a different decision. So my recommendation is that whatever the council does, that, that the discretion is. Right, so either they make it a Shao, or that the council comes up with an alternative, or just completely does away with the hotel requirement. But the alternative would also need to be a removal of discretion. And I don't know how that's gonna look, but, but that's my main legal advice, is that there not be any discretion in this area.
Whichever way they go for.
Right, so either make it a Shao, or, or go with those other two routes.
Well, the Shao would leave the discretion.
No, Shao would remove basically fifty hotels, no matter what.
We wanna get rid of the May that's in there.
Correct.
One way or the other.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, my, my comment, and kudo to the two former council members that attended tonight. Back in two thousand, two thousand seventeen, when this was brought to their attention, it was brought, actually, I'm assuming, to their attention for, to do something about it by some of the members in this public meeting here tonight, that that's when they were, a group was wanting to put gaming in the back of the grocery store. So that started that poll issue, and I'm sure, well, we know they did, they had open meetings, public comment, people came, they voiced their opinions. So the council that time done what we have right now. Here it is, six or seven years later, we're looking at this here, that, a couple of comments I have on that is, is Pine West, that they were made aware of this ordinance. So whoever their customer is, had to be aware of this, in my opinion. Maybe they never read it, I don't know. But you know, you look at their drawing, it went from a truck stop area, field islands, now to the casino, restaurant, tavern. So some along line, either something like getting the whole word out, here we are at this, that line right here, what are we gonna do on this here? You know, there's threats of, well, if we don't, if we make them build the rooms, they're gonna leave, you know, they're not gonna put it up then, we end up with a, you know, Mr. Ranks, he said he's done, we're gonna end up with a vacant corner right there, you know, that, there's ten thousand vehicles go through that intersection a day, and it's a very important intersection there, so I wanna promote that, but once again, I, the council, previous council did what they thought was right, public hearings were taken. Times have changed, back then, you know, things were probably a little, price of gas was probably a buck fifty, now it's a little four dollars, you know. But you know, the one concerning thing, man, I talked about, and Kella gets sent a letter, and you know, she stakes in gold letters, you know, the daily market cannot support another, another hundred slot machines, meaning the casino, or what do you call it, the slot machine thing. But here it is, Jason Waitwood says he's gonna build a big casino, and like, putting a hundred slot machines in it, I guess, because we can't afford, cannot support a hundred slot machines, so that's one, Ruby's another Ruby, so I'm a little wishy-washy on that comment right there, is one says, we don't need it because we can't support it, and Jason's gonna spend fifty million dollars to put a casino and housing and all this, which is great, but he's gonna have a building with no slot machines, so something's haywire there, so again, I appreciate Bruce and, excuse me, Pat coming in with voice and opinion, because they did what they, the best of their hearts. And I just had a real hard time changing something that was put in the city code, you know, again, times have changed, but then, but that's my, that's my opinion on it, it's gonna get down to, it's a May and Shao.
Well, I, I wanna point out that it's exactly that verbiage that brought somebody to our door, because reading that, they believe that the council could approve that if they wanted. And that's the, that's the problem here, is that that discretion is legally problematic on a number of levels.
It can be.
It can be. And so that's, thank you, that's what, that's what needs to be clarified there, so.
I mean, right now, it's rooms that are regulating the non-restricted license, so I mean, is that something that we look at only permitting so many gaming license in our city, and maybe it's regulated in a different way, and it's per capita base? And I think that there is a way for everybody to come out happy, and everybody can feel like they are winning in this community, and I think we need to get there, we can all get there.
Anything you'd like to throw in the council's head?
I'm just taking on that, I've been taking a lot of comments the whole week. I do agree though, that when you get rid of the May, I can say, I, I wanna make sure to clarify, if we vote tonight, do we have to have full direction, or just open it up tonight?
I mean, we can certainly amend, you know, the, the item to whatever the council's pleasure is going forward. If, if we need to look at other options, we can certainly do that.
I mean, I, as I stated in the beginning of the meeting, I would like the council to, if I had my druthers, I would like the council to, word, the motion that gets made, to open that up to incorporate any options that may be brought to the table, rather than just going one direction at night, but that's, that is our discretion.
So if you, even if we went just, if we were like, okay, we'll leave it as is, but we're gonna change the word from May to Shao, are we gonna, we're gonna have to go through the process still of the whole?
You'd have to do the hearings and everything like that, so, we'll do still a public comment.
Yeah, and what I would probably recommend is, if the city council is not wanting to eliminate the hotel requirement, perhaps we could table this, and just bring it back on our next agenda with more information, if there are other alternatives. That's, that's what it sounds like, the council's going, sure that they don't wanna make a decision on this tonight, so.
I don't know, I don't, I don't want to make a decision, I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure I'm just in the process of, if, let's say we just leave it, whether it is, but change the word May from Shao, is that the end, end game, or do we have opportunities still to change later too? For after more public hearing, because like Jim was saying, that this process has happened once before, and some, you know, it has happened, and so, I just wanna.
Well, any change to the code will need to, I'll have to draft an ordinance, a lot to come before the council for first reading and a second in order to pass.
Right, yeah.
So, so tonight's decision isn't to necessarily change the code, it would be to directly to change it one way or the other. Okay, you can.
Those.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna say the same thing you were saying, so we do, we've got to tell you, we've got to instruct you, instruct you to do a May or Shao. Am I, I'm not.
You don't have to, but you could.
I don't understand, we could, we, we have to do something.
You have to do something, but the options on the table are.
Sitting on the fence.
The, the options on the table tonight are, and these are all possible options, because I think the, the table's pretty wide open. The options are, strike the city attorney to remove the May and replace it with Shao, or remove the fifty-room hotel requirement, or table it and bring back other options for amending the code in, in different ways, to address the concerns of the community.
And I would recommend option three, I think that was, just to table, bring back other options.
And those would be anything from adjusting how we look at the regulation on it, because I think there needs to be some regulation, that could be removing the regulation, that could be however the council feels they wanna do that, but we could bring back other information from elsewhere and, and kind of collaborate with the information that every, all the council members and myself have received from the community in the past week.
If we look at other things that we ask for more information, we still undoubtedly come around to opening this up and talking with the community again, am I correct?
Yes.
So.
No, go ahead, Jim.
So as we look at this, here's, is that we're gonna change the code, so, on the city ordinance is title three, chapter five. You know, I just got two pages here, and we got a lot of reading in them, two pages. And Pine West, they want us, or the request, looking at those three items, you know, three, five, thirteen, three, five, thirteen, blah, 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 F, G, and H, so which one are we, as director of attorney, to look at, the whole chapter? The whole chapter five?
Or whatever, whoever you want to, whatever you want to look at.
Well, that's what I mean, if nothing's huge, you sit there and read it, you know, have your hand underneath your chin, because it's about as boring as watching paint. But this is, you know, I, I've sat there and read this time and time again, you know, you got twelve, which is the major thing about the rooms, then you go down into G, you go along, you think, oh, that's looking good, there might be a way out, and all of a sudden, subject to the requirements of subsection F twelve, the fifty rooms. Then you go in H, you read that, looking along with it, damn, just gonna look good, go to the last sentence, shall be required to comply with subsection. She'll be required to comply with subsection F twelve, again.
So choose your own adventure, bud.
Yeah, that's, that's right, so, I mean, I agree that code needs to be changed, you know, but I, I, I just need to have some better clarification, maybe like the attorney just said, option three. I'm really, don't like changing stuff, doesn't make other people happy.
Right. And that's, I mean, that's not my objective here with the city of night, my objective is to change it, so it is clear for developers who wanna come in, that down the road in five years, even if we resolve this issue, somebody else doesn't come back in and say, wait a minute, I noticed something like we did here, and I want you guys to look at it. We want it to be clear, we want it to be concise, we want it to be easy to understand, and we want the objective of the community to be considered in mind.
And that all comes down to may or shal?
Yes.
Am I correct, period? Okay.
More or less, yeah.
I mean, you know, Leo's gotta, Leo's gotta do what he's gotta do, but he can't fix anything until we say may or shal.
Well, he can't fix anything until, and, and if the council wants to limit themselves to fixing that language, that has been the council from the attorney, is the shortest distance from A to B is changing that word.
Right.
Either making it a shal or removing the fifty hotel remo, uh, requirement altogether, that's the cleanest way to make, get rid of the discretion and to fix the code. But, uh, just in the last twenty-four hours, I've, I've heard of, uh, some additional ideas that may be considered, that the council might wanna consider. As you just mentioned, uh, Councilman Williams, um, potentially doing a, uh, I think you'd mentioned doing some type of per capita.
Yeah, and I think that kind of helps what everybody's concerned is, is the predatory gaming and the slot parlors, and there's only a limited amount of gaming machines required or allowed in the city or permits. I mean, I think that helps regulate some of those concerns, um, but also in the same token, you know, if I open up a business, am I gonna be required to have hotels? Am I gonna be required to do certain things, like is this what we are going to become as a city, is, or city of requirements? Because one thing is required with the other, so I don't think casinos and hotels have to operate together. They are successful, um, separate, so I would be fine with the third option saying, let's table it with, um, with the option to come back and incorporate other options, um, not, or including, but not limited to getting rid of the hotel requirement.
Well, and Councilman Williams Harper, I think that goes to addressing your concern you brought up about the community being a pay-to-play community. I mean, business in and of itself is already a pay-to-play game. There is a barrier to entry to any business. If you wanna open up, uh, if you wanna open up a store that sells garden gnomes, you're gonna have to rent a storefront and stock up on all the garden gnomes they have. Why, why would we spend time putting conditional barriers to entry unless it serves a purpose? And I'm not saying it doesn't here, like I said, gaming is a highly regulated industry, I think that's a reason. And I think it should be regulated to some extent in our community. Um, I just wanna make sure, my, my wish would be that the regulation and the, the regulation has a direct impact upon that industry, instead of just packing on anchors to make sure that only people with a certain amount of money can get in, but, you know, they.
I agree wholeheartedly, and, and the, the other thing too also is, I don't want the community to feel like we are just dragging our butts across the floor, because we're afraid to, to go one way or the other. And I, you know, I, I think maybe we still need to continue to look at this, but it's just so important to me that the community, you're all size, and especially if we're going to instruct Leo to bring in some, some more information like Sam suggested for cap to, or whatever. Because it is their, it, it's their, their community, I mean, part of it is, you don't wanna bite the hand that feeds you, however. I want some new people to come into the community too. So if there is something that we are missing, by all means, let me know.
Right, well, and as I told everybody who's come to my office, um, government is a, is a game of compromise. There are other people on every side of this. What did I say to the governor, there, there's no pancakes open that it doesn't have two sides. Um, and I, I, I think all of those need to be heard. And that's, that's the due process that I think we, as the elected officials, owe the constituents, whether they're business owners in the community, um, on one side of this issue or the other, so. But then again, I will not, the mayor doesn't get a vote on, on.
I know, I know.
On ordinances or veto that, so I'm just talking out of turn here, that's.
So I guess I would make a motion, if nobody else has anything to add, that we table this for now and we look at other options to amend our code, which could include removing the hotel requirement, but also we could look at options to limit gaming in our city.
Gaming in our city is so broad, I, I think that needs more clarification, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
I mean, there's slot machine requirements per capita, gaming licenses for our city built based on population.
But the board is just a table, correct?
Correct, so that we can look at all of those options.
Real quick, there, we're talking about a non-restricted gaming license, I'm sorry, but we're talking about a non-restricted gaming license, which is a whole different animal than just slot machines.
We're, we're not taking public comment on this, but.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Did you want to?
I mean, yeah, table it, I think we need to look at it and.
Part of the table process.
But when, addressing Councilman Williams Harper, do you wanna specific, do you wanna specify that is? Because I think this book deals primarily with the unrestricted gaming license. Do you wanna specify that, what we're looking at here, are we just looking at ball gaming in the city?
I would say unrestricted, and this is, this is the one, yeah.
Okay. Motion's clear, is not yet.
No, I, I gotta, I agree with Jerry Lynn. That was, you, you're doing good with your comment, and tell you said restrict the amount of gaming.
Or, regulate, sorry.
Yeah, you know, I don't, you know, I don't think.
Regulate unrestricted gaming licenses, I miss it.
Thank you.
Yeah, right, that's better, you know, we are a fun state to come to gamble. I, I have a property in, in slot machines in the grocery store, you know, that's my thought, but.
Well, I, I agree, I like that, we've never think.
Okay, so motion from Councilman Bell, the way of the second.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Second from Councilman Alworth, any further discussion? See you.
Stand clear.
Know what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, okay, any other questions? I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Item carries, or tabled, rather, item tables for two weeks. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item fourteen. Councilman Alworth, Councilman Williams, discussion only, updates on quarter group efforts on the city VDC half, secure federal and state.
Um, you were here at the last meeting with them, but Karen Gresh, our representative with Quarter Group, is going to be leaving Quarter Group at the end of the month. And we'll have a new representative, Brian Bates, and it's kind of a late subject on that, they're still working on all the projects, it's still ahead.
Any questions? Okay, uh, hopefully we'll move on to item fifteen. Councilman Williams Harper, Fire Chief Stork, discussion for possible action, direct city attorney to enter negotiations with Pine County and the Duckwater Attorney Tribe regarding fire service agreement.
Well, my understanding are there are still some issues that we, uh, don't have so much needed, um, agreements to take care of these things. So I would, uh, like us, uh, I would like the city attorney to be able to do more investigation, uh, so we can have all of our ducks in a row, no, unintended, um, with the bribe, with these service, service agreements that aren't necessary.
Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor, reading Chief Stork's comments on, on this item, you know, about the trooper not being around, the time we're out on calls. It, it's come to a time in which our fire department is called the City of Ely Fire Department EMS. We've got four thousand two hundred and five residents here, and they take off and go seventy, eighty miles one way out of town for, ends up being a false alarm. We're jeopardizing our community by not having a full department, the main piece of equipment could be on this call, we could have a mass accident of some sort. I think it's come to the time now, we need to quit Pine County and, up, up to the task of taking care of your own business. And one of the deals is London's closer, but they got their requirements, well, we'll go there, we don't want you guys to come pick up the people. And White Pine County has got to take some of the load off our department, we're stretching them all the way to Kirby, halfway to Windover. And we don't have no, we had forty-five volunteers when I was in the department, we're down to twenty-five, I think, to report it is. And some of them are working, we need to defend or protect our residents in our city. I'm sorry, these other people are out of town. Air Med or whatever they're calling out there, maybe, it's time to look at that. You guys wanna be part of our city or, or have on service, you run the Duckwater. We gotta do something, we can't be sending all of our EMS fire personnel out of town on a wild goose chase, trying to find out.
And I completely agree with that, I think some of the impetus here is that, um, we need to tell Pine County that so that we have the basis to say, I'm sorry, but if you guys can't support this agreement, then we're not running out there, rather than just saying wholesale, sorry, we're not doing anything, we're not talking to you. Um, but I think that discussion needed to be had, and, um, we did talk to the county about that. Um, whether they wanted to kind of take the lead on this or not, their response was that, you guys are the one doing the runs, go ahead, if you have problems, let us know. But based on the conversations, um, as they surround the service to the, or the, um, shows department going out there, the shows department does go out there because they tried this exact thing, and they said, no, we're not gonna, we don't wanna support you on this. And, and that way they have a basis for saying, okay, if you're not gonna play ball, these are people that live in your community, we can't be responsible for that. And I, I think that's the, that's the main basis for this conversation on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, Jim, I'm just making sure we're, we're on the same page that this is saying, there's still more work to do, some, are, are we saying the same thing?
Yeah, it is, but we need, like, Mayor clarified for me, to make me feel a little bit more warm and fuzzy about this. We wouldn't put the ball in her court, if they don't wanna go, and we're gonna tell them, I guess we should say, we're not rolling.
Right, I agree.
That's, that's the thing, is the resources we're running.
Yeah, we're really stretched there.
Well, on that, um, just for the, the rest of the council, if you haven't read that, or the community here, um, listening, is that currently our highway patrol only has three people working in that area, probably about twenty-two or thirty thousand square miles. And if they can't respond, state dispatch has been calling our EMS and saying, hey, can you run out to this? Not knowing if it is even a, a medical call. And like Councilman Alworth said, that puts our community at risk, because we're going out there on a wild goose chase. We don't know if that's a medical call, we don't know if it's an accident, we don't know what it is, because nobody else would respond. So maybe where you should have had a highway patrolman responding, you've got some volunteers and an ambulance running out to who knows what. And we need to either have, we need to put the ball in, in Pine County's court on that for sure.
Exactly, and for example, the chief reported back that one of those terrible snowstorms we had here last month, the, the rescue truck, barely been past Cummins Lake and went in the ditch. Chief goes out there, he went about a hundred feet farther, went in the ditch, on the call, the guys are at the Lincoln County border. The trooper made it there, the people, there was a wreck, they saw a road, they were stuck in the car, they couldn't get out, they were all alive, healthy. But they were risking our units, they were getting towed out, so that's a good example, you know, we have got to say, hey, the city of Ely, we're gonna take care of you folks in this city.
This item just allows the, the attorney to contact Pine County, Duckwater, and embrace these issues and bring them to the table with it. And see, see if they even wanna be brought to the table for, that's one of the items too. If they don't, I think that's a great basis for us to say, sorry, we can't respond out there, we won't be responding to calls from state dispatch for that area.
I think you just need to have slash EMS.
Yeah.
Kind of just fires for us.
So can we make that motion that the, uh, district, that our attorney, um, go ahead and enter into negotiations to see what's what?
Absolutely, is that a motion you're making?
That motion.
That motion from Councilman Williams Harper, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Grant, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item sixteen, Councilman Williams Harper, Fire Chief Stork, discussion for possible action, approval of notice and acceptance bids for the city for its, the city's Ford E three fifty ambulance, which is out of service.
Um, I, it's out of service, and I think, uh, it'd be great for someone to take it off our hands, someone will probably be very excited to take that off of our hands. Um, it's pretty simple.
I have a motion on the second.
We gotta call me a month, yeah. I read this gen item, like, and I voiced my opinion to the city clerk, it was a poorly worded gen item, in my opinion. Notice and accept bids for the city's Ford F, or E three fifty, which is out of commission. So I, I talked to the clerk, she talked to the chief, the chief called me, explained everything. I believe, I mean, I'm gonna vote for this, if it's a motion's made, all it had to say, except bid to sell, I mean.
I, I agree with that.
It was not clear enough, here I am, going through the city gen to here, I'm gonna go, for what, that's way out of the, we gotta be more precise. The clerk said, I didn't write it, Pat said he didn't write it, Leo's the man. So I'm just letting you know, I told him I had a voiced my opinion, I voiced my opinion.
Everybody blames the lawyers, that's how it is.
Right, right, you're right, buddy.
Well, you can, you can, I told him to amend this, what you said, uh, the.
To sell. Bid to sell, I just come up with.
Bid to sell, yes.
My opinion is that it was clear, when I read it, obviously it was to, to notice and accept bids for the, the vehicle, so to sell the vehicle. So, one way or the other, but we can definitely.
Sure.
And, and just for the record, I wrote it.
Oh, oh, yeah, you wrote the approval.
Yeah, yeah. But, but Pat did say in his, um, memo that he had sent out, um, you know, delaying two weeks won't make a break, you know.
I mean, I don't think that's a big enough issue, unless the council does, but I'll entertain a motion unless there's something else.
I'll make a motion to sell it, push up a bid.
Motion from Councilman.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Williams Harper, thank you.
And I, and I wanna make sure we don't give our attorney a comment, but we love the job you're doing.
I have a motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kevin Saward, item seventeen, Councilmember City Engineer Alworth, discussion for possible action, approval of proposed layout for regional transportation commissions RTC fiscal year twenty-three. Murder street construction starting after Fourth, Fourth Avenue and Tom Dickerson Avenue, potential place summer planning.
So, uh, in front of you is exhibit of the proposed murder street, obviously there's not much that you can do with it. But since you guys did vote to go to a one-way, uh, the only thing this is doing is, uh, starting out from the existing width down between Fourth and Fifth Street, and adding right there, the road will just begin to slide and narrow its edge to the south end down there. Even though that we are narrowing that road because you went for it, to a one-way, um, it's still wider than it is in the asphalt for that area. So I think when you go back in here, the other big thing that I wanna point out on here is, I'd like to go to El Kirk Route there, it's a roll curb, it's kind of down actually, in that area. Uh, just because that'll keep them from, from on their sidewalks, which is a little depressing for the driveways. Um, but other than that, it's very difficult to drive up and down on our sidewalks, which. And then the other, the hope there was, um, up along the section of the road, um, along, along Sabre's Park there, for, is a, no sidewalk, there's, there's no housing along that side. And so just to save costs associated with that, um, by closing, there's no sidewalk on that side of the road.
You gotta speak up, please.
Any other questions? All in, any motion?
That's discussion.
Oh, it's discussion only?
No. No.
No, discussion possible action, no, no, we, we press that one, yeah, discussion possible action.
I would need a motion to.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve this.
Motion from Councilman Williams Harper for approval, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Williams, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item eighteen. Oh, gosh, Councilmember City Trader Trust, discussion for possible action, review of fiscal year twenty-four capital projects, of all landfill material with possible selection or lots.
As for the, it's for the dump trucks or, or other options that we could do. I'd like to keep it open and continue to look for you, some used, new, or other options for the landfill.
What other options are we talking about?
Well, we've discussed like a weight lagging.
That those six axle articulated dump trucks?
Just different ideas, but I'd like to just keep it as open so then we'll, we'll have a better idea of what we want to report. Bring it back in.
We had discussed you guys looking at used options rather than going through state purchasing. Is that still something you guys are researching?
Yes, actually, they don't, but I was, I got meeting with county, Martin. And I know that county's gonna be selling some of their vehicles, their dump trucks. So I was gonna talk to Martin, see what position they're in.
Okay.
Did consider. So that's like, you know, just different ideas.
Uh, are there any discussion? Do you think anybody wants to add? Okay. Okay, that opened. Do we have a motion?
Oh.
You have a motion. That's not a discussion.
I'll make a motion that Mike and the gang continue to work, try to find the best thought.
Okay. I have a motion. Second from Councilman O'Neil. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Number nineteen, which is a discussion on the item, there's Councilmember City Trader Trac, discussion only, review of fiscal year twenty-four redevelopment fund and revolving loan budgets.
How about words?
Okay, the reason they put this on there is because in the tentative budget, I went ahead and budgeted a big chunk of this. So I thought I'd just give you a quick review or explanation of what the redevelopment fund and the revolving loan fund, what came about. Revolving loan fund was, it started on a donation and I'm not sure who donated money.
Marshall.
Who was it?
Marshall Tuckerman.
Yeah, and it was specific to be available for businesses in the city of Ely to request loans, low interest loans through that to help their businesses out. The redevelopment fund was a big production, I think, where New York was here. And so there is defined areas that are in redevelopment area. The revenue that we get when that is off the property taxes that the county collects and then sends to us. And that money can be used basically for anything redevelopment. It looks like, I think right now four loans, low interest loans out in that. But my theory, whatever my thought process was, if things come up during the year, it would be up at council's discretion. So I just figured if it's in the budget, they'll get those things that needed or could be used out there for loans or whatever. It's in the budget to spend, that's needed. But I would let that up to you guys' direction on that one.
As I recall from reading the sixty funded pages in the redevelopment area, it's for things also like acquiring properties and disposing of properties or fixing up properties to dispose of properties, that kind of thing as well. We talked about doing the, um, society proven grants through there too. We've talked about doing housing through there. We'd use that for some of the, we'd use some of that for the.
We'd use some of it for the honorary, because honorary falls within it and it's, you know, an asset that we want to keep.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's real important. This was, I put together in two thousand four, again, like Jeanette said, ma, uh, mayor, Mayor Miller got with a guy out of, uh, North Las Vegas modeling after their. This is a very powerful tool to help the city. And there's a map in there that's, you need to have good glasses to read it. But it, it takes in, so you really need to take.
There's five areas.
Yeah, and you need to take the minute or two to read the sixteen supporting pages. But if you see something in there, you come with an idea, you hear the constituents are on to say, hey, that might fall in the redevelopment. There's five hundred and forty thousand dollars in there right now.
I think I bet you that's six hundred.
Okay, so six hundred by time it rolls in, you know, it, it's, it's really powerful. What you can do with this, it picks in the cemetery, Main Street here, up along the railroad tracks, some of Central Ely, and that and so forth.
Actually, ten thousand, that is, that's like a big trees or worms.
Yeah, so this is, again, you know, I like the way she did this. It puts the whole budget amount in the budget, the whole account, whatever she put in there. That way you come up with something, you don't come back to this whole hoopla.
Well, I'd like to fund some good projects for that. The other thing interesting that's in that sixty pages is that redevelopment, that expires in, I think it's thirty years. So we're about halfway through that, give or take. The lower half.
Little over half, is this two thousand four?
Yeah, page thirty-one, thirty years.
So we want to take some. We definitely want to get some projects that are. Okay, anything else? Anybody want to add a question? Great. Item nineteen, we finished with our twenty, Councilmember City Attorney Kehun, discussion only, review of requirements to add property to the redevelopment area.
Yeah, so this is regarding the Belfer property and the city's desire to sell that to a developer. In order to do that for the fair market value, it will need to be sold as a redevelopment area or as an economic development. So in order to do it under redevelopment though, it's not currently in the redevelopment area. And that's quite the process if you had a, a chance to redevelop it, to get that through and, and, and to amend the redevelopment plan and include this property. So my recommendation would actually be to go the economic development plan, which is also in that area.
And I think that's what we did with the property on Winter Road or Reno Road.
Right.
I think that, because that wasn't in the redevelopment area. The last three days too.
So unless councils, any questions?
Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to comment that Belfer property, that took the wind out of my shell. I, I thought it was, I thought it was in redevelopment until clerk Lee told me you're on there. I hate being on there. But, uh, you know, that Leo did the whole process of getting this in there, it detailed things. So I think there's another way to make this project work better. Thanks for the research on that Leo had, clerk Lee.
Item twenty-one, Councilmember City Attorney Kehun, discussion only, first reading ordinance seven four seven, bill number twenty-one three, answer two. Ordinance, proposal ordinance establishing a praiser selection process for the sale or release of miss corral property.
Any questions? This is essentially required for the process.
Okay, do we have to, is a question, we asked, where are the money that you paid for this property? I think in the, fire bureau phone out with Jeanette. Just do this, refer to all the money that's gonna come later?
That, I, I assumed it was coming from the five hundred thousand dollars the council says.
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna like to do.
For housing.
I agree with your assumption.
My assumption is okay, okay.
Let the record show that you agreed to somebody.
But ju- just for the record, this is the first reading of the ordinance for the praiser selection process. Where are ways for being able to order the praiser?
Yep, right, right. So this was just discussion, first reading.
It is here.
All right. Item twenty-two, Councilmember City Attorney Kehun, discussion for possible action.
Wait.
Oh, gosh.
I'm used to you all waiting, having to vote on the first reading, sorry.
I can add to all this. All right, Councilmember City Attorney Kehun, discussion for possible action approval of the city, for the city of Ely to execute a subdivision settlement participation form, consider K, pursuant to the one Nevada agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries, one Nevada agreement previously agreed upon by city of Ely on August twenty twenty-one. Electing to participate in the Allergan settlement, Allergan settlement and release all claims against Allergan. Questions?
We've done several of these in the past. This is an American opioid litigation. And this is essentially Allergan settlement. The city is receiving a portion of that settlement. And I had it on my computer, but it's.
Twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents.
It's, it's an abnormal, compared to what the other counties and cities are receiving. But that will be, be triggered over to the city soon.
I'll entertain a motion on this. All second. Motion from Councilman Trac, after Councilman Alworth, and we discuss. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it's over. Councilmember City Attorney Kehun, discussion for possible action, approval for the city of Ely to execute a subdivision settlement participation form, consider A, pursuant to the one Nevada agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries, one Nevada agreement previously agreed upon by city of Ely on August twenty twenty-one. Electing to participate in CBS for that settlement and release all claims against CBS for that. All in favor of motion?
All right.
Motion from Councilman.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? Here it is. I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Here it's over. Item twenty-four, Councilman, Councilmembers, City Building Official, Peter Sir, discussion for possible action, approval to direct city attorney to draft an ordinance requiring on performance bond for curb and gutter installation.
Good morning, I think we're already out in the morning hour. So currently the ordinance requires curb and gutter for any residential development, which is perfectly fine. The penalty for, for not performing is up to ninety days in jail and up to a three hundred dollar fine. It's kind of a ten pound hammer solution to the problem. So I would like to require either performance bond for issuance of permit or for curb and gutter to be in place for issuance of permit. If we went with strictly the ordinance as we have it, I inherited the case, it's now seven hundred days old. The gentleman is now looking at a hundred to eighty years of prison and a two hundred and ten thousand dollar fine. So I'd just like to solve this on the front end and not have to chase people down on that.
I've talked to Greg about this a number of times and I think it's a much cleaner solution to making sure that building projects can fight the bad.
I've got a question, just a little off of this here. The, the curb and gutter, is that a standard, you know, the curb and then the, I get it called the pan? Is it twenty inches, eighteen inches, fourteen and a half, or what is this?
I believe it's eighteen inches. All of that design criteria is handled by the city engineer of the, the enforcement for the application of the curb and gutter. It's found under the section which, uh, governs my position.
Only reason I ask that, I know there was a section in town that the people got their forms from a commercial side. The pan was longer or shorter, I can't remember when they went to do it, possibly lay asphalt. They had a dog in the thing.
Sure. And again, the design criteria is, is, is one hundred percent accepted and approved by the city engineer.
All right, thank you.
All in favor of motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Councilman Alworth, any second.
All second.
Second from Councilman O'Neil. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks for your take. Item Alford, public comment, please state your link to the record, we'll have three minutes and your council will enclose on anything of its own, consider your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm disappointing you folks for not enforcing three five three. It's mandatory that you have the rooms. City attorney screwed up and put may, not you Leo, but I'm watching. The whole meetings and all you people combined? Mr. Alford said, a hundred machines according to what Ann Kellum said, no big deal. But that's why the properties have motel rooms, hotel rooms. Cause you cannot depend on the local traffic alone. You have to feed those machines, you have to feed the industry and that comes from the hotel room motel that was asked for. If you add a hundred machines and you don't have the capability when someone from the industry tells you it's gonna be a hardship, it is. I've, I've been reading since nineteen seventy-four. You guys are screwing up. You need to look at long-term income. Property tax, room tax. You wanna be liberals and say, oh, we need to be open, fine, how are you gonna pay for it? I see that you give out raises of forty, fifty thousand dollars, demand for two and a half percent for the next couple of years. Nobody else does that. How are you gonna sustain it? Mr. Mayor, I'm again requesting a copy of the letter, memo, already had the correspondence communicated to the city clerk Jennifer Lee to correct the public on events on the city sidewalk right away enforcing provisions and handicap. And those handicapped, who most shares under busy road and traffic. I've showed you pictures before, I've seen more actions today. I'm reminded that I was getting permission to put in curb and gutter at my property. Men turn around and sue me when I'm too cold, selecting enforcement and need to stop. Mr. Mayor, I've again requested to invest the properties and individuals that the city has permitted allowed to park parties in city parks and streets. I didn't in that. I attended the recreational planning commissions on a regular basis, not seeing one application presented. You guys are losing a lot of revenue. I'm a member now and I'm gonna enforce that. And it's gonna come back to you folks. I'm never skating, I've asked for an application to date, I've not provided one. The city's not allowing me, I'm gonna use our property as others are allowing. Stop the discrimination. The city is selective to enforce the law under the color law. I've been issued citations for some called non-compliance. Again, how many others, I want to see that. Mr. Mayor, planning commission and city council, it's not addressed to city co-bonations of previous and present members of planning commission as well as those same council and planning commission. They need to comply with city code that they have, for the way they're adopted. You're selective to enforce.
Mr. Tejas.
I need some management, Mr. Mayor.
Just three minutes, Mr. Tejas.
Long meetings, solve it quick. Jerry Cunard walking seventh and Nth Street. Thank you, Mr. Alford, for recognizing the double talk that came here tonight with regards to we can't support Dottie's or whatever coming on the corner of Almond. Though we can support a ninety-room hotel pampered inn coming next to a hundred luxury apartments going on my street. This was the first time tonight that we've been admitted in public that there are more plans coming that way, up to four hundred apartments. And I find that threat to be ill-advised that they don't want to, that they'll pull that funding, their fifty million dollar funding for this community for that project if we allow this project to come in. I don't understand how it is that it's okay for us to rezone up on, on the backside of Bell Avenue to allow to go from commercial and residential to multifamily residential. Where's the rest of that residential coming from? Currently, that rest of that parcel that's in discussion is all C three, which is commercial. There's plans, they want to abandon Cleve Drive, which butts up to my property. I don't, I, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of smoke and mirrors, and I think that this council needs to look at that. What's good for one is good for all. And if we're going to allow them to come in with another ninety, ninety-bed hotel, more casinos, and we can support those, then we can support the casinos on the corner of Dottie's. That's just how that's gonna go. Local contractors weren't used for the Holiday Inn. White Pine Glass didn't get the bid because it was cheaper to get it out of Vegas. Sometimes you get what you pay for. They didn't keep that property, they sold it because it wasn't, they developed it and didn't get what they wanted. When that happens with their apartments at two thousand dollars a month for a one-bedroom, they're not gonna be able to sustain that, the loan add two hundred and fifty-eight more. I just think that we need to take the time to examine that, make sure that what's going forward is what's best for the whole community, for those of us that actually live and work here. Because I, there, I have no qualms against a Dottie's to go in there and get a hamburger or whatever. We have limited choices here. We can do all the tourism we want, but if we can't sustain that and provide food for those people, what good does it do to have lodging if we don't have food to go along with it? So, as far as your runoff ditch, I think that maybe we should have looked to local contractors first. You get what you pay for. And that's the same thing I would say with the curb and gutter issue and why we need to require a bond. Because one of those contractors isn't doing things to specification. And so you need to choose one that's gonna do the best for you. And it might not always be the cheapest, but it's the one that's the right choice. And I hope that you'll follow that when it's time to award the bid to finish the Murray Street project. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for taking the discussion about the program requirement. I think that was, for me, my, my opinion, I think that's very wise. As far as it goes with, you know, casinos and hotels, they, you know, like going together like peanut butter and chocolate. There's certain metrics that exist to determine customer base and things like that. And those, those metrics come from population, demographic of that population and also hotel rooms that feed a casino typically. And as you embark on this journey, I would encourage you to really, really look at a lot of the larger neighborhood casinos that jump. And as you embark on this journey, I would encourage you to really, really look at a lot of the larger neighborhood casinos that don't have rooms in various communities. And then also, you know, consult a lot of big brains who know gaming and who know communities and know neighborhood casinos and things like that. Because it really, you really, you really do need a, you need the rooms to feed the casino. Like, it's just the bottom line when it comes to that type of business. So otherwise, you're feeding on the neighborhood. And that's really where the casino parlors kind of went wrong, in a lot of people's opinions. So that's something to think about, but I just wanted to say thank you for your time, thank you for the thoughtful session.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Sandy Marino, live on East Eighth Street. I want someone to mention the comment that we have about ten thousand vehicles coming through that intersection where the proposed Starbucks is. And I was just curious if anyone has ever looked at where those vehicles are coming from? Are they locals, are they obstingers? I had the occasion to come home from Vegas on a Friday afternoon recently. You know, every vehicle I saw was from Idaho. They had to come through Ely to go to Vegas. And then the rest of them were Canada, California, Oregon, Washington. I only saw a handful of Nevada vehicles. So that tells me that people are driving through our town to go somewhere else where they can have fun, or whatever it is. A lot of the activities in this town are seasonal. I think the only thing you can do year-round is the railroad. And if I was the Nevada, I would be more concerned about a new motel going up where it is landlocked. I don't know why no one has thought about the fact that when the tour buses start coming back, they used to go to the Nevada. And those tourists got out, they stayed in the motel, they ate at the restaurant there, or maybe they walked around town and visited your little local businesses or ate somewhere else. If they go to a motel up there on the hill, they're landlocked. And they will eat at that restaurant and shop whatever is available there, and they will stay there, and they will not service your downtown community that everyone's so worried about. And I'm not against their project, but I just find it ironic that they sit there and say, "We can't afford one more casino, but we're gonna build one." And I would be more worried about them putting the Nevada out of business than a casino that won't be here for a few years. You can't blame the downfall of any of the businesses now on something that isn't even here. And I just think it's, like someone else said, a lot of smoke and mirrors, something doesn't sound right, the math doesn't work. But anyway, thank you for your consideration of change, being open to change. And like you said, some things were done for a reason back in the past, but you can't just live in the past, you have to move on. If you don't, you really will, this town really will die. But thank you for your time, and we appreciate all your effort.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm going to meet Jason Wood with the Prospector. Mr. Hallward, I just want to address your concern that Ms. Kellogg saved the town, I bet you got a hundred slot machines, and she's correct. That we are building a hundred hotel rooms. So when we budget our projects, we budget the casino revenue strictly from the hotel guests. So we proved with the holiday, if you build it, it'll come. If you look at the room tax from before the holiday was built to now, the room tax has gone up dramatically. People are now staying here in Ely because they're I U reward members. So we're gonna build a Hilton property, which is an upscale, and they have reward numbers as well. So they will now stop here in Ely and not drive through, stops, and then they're gonna be here, stay the night, get a room tax scale in the casino. We don't budget any of our projects on local play. When you build a casino, no hotels, you're just preying on locals. That's the issue that we have. Big difference between a hotel with a casino versus just a casino with no rooms. And thank you for everyone's consideration this evening, and we'd love to be part of the input on reworking the regulations. We'll reach out, of course, and see where we can get our two cents out of this, but appreciate it. Good evening.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Cynthia Davis, and I have the opportunity to interview Mr. Ramsey, who's selling a property on the corner. He assured me it wasn't a Dottie's. Everybody keeps saying it's a Dottie's, it's not. But it's still a small casino. He said it's similar to the one it loves, the Carl's Jr. with a... So that's what he explained to me. It's gonna be like a little restaurant with some machines, I don't know how many. But the corner is ancient, it's unattractive, it's, it, it needs to be tore down and remodeled, in my own opinion. So anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for public comment. Hearing it's enough, we'll close public comment. And after three hours, I will entertain...
So we're pretty sure.
I can.
I can.
All in favor?
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reporting.